Call the November Planning Commission to order.
Dana Camp?
Here.
Nanette Reese?
Here.
Whitney Birmingham? David Wisdom?
Here.
Joseph A. Strope?
Here.
Bill Chancellor?
Here.
Jennifer Stevens?
Here.
Oscar Mosley?
Here.
Walker Davis.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to give a brief overview of the process of the public meeting of the Auburn City Planning Commission. The commission is presented with agenda items by the city planning department. A representative for that agenda will have the opportunity to make comments or answer specific questions from the commission. Some agenda items require a public hearing, and at that time, the public hearing will be open. And we want everyone to be heard. And if you will, please keep your comments to five minutes and comments relevant to the item at hand. After everyone has spoken, representative and commission and staff will have the opportunity to have more discussion on anything that's brought up. After the commission hears and votes process, I'd like to summarize our role and responsibility related to the approval of subdivision plats. By Alabama statute, the municipal planning commission, such as ours, is the final approval authority for subdivision plats. With regards to those plats, the commission acts in its administrative body and is bound by the limitations in state laws, city zoning ordinance, and subdivision regulations previously adopted by this commission. While public hearings are required on each plat, and we welcome any and all public comment, please understand the commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds the specific requirements in laws and regulations previously described. Thank you, and Justice.
Thank you. So, tonight we have several public hearings. I'm sure a lot of you are here to speak in. I just kind of want to go over just kind of what the procedures will be with the public hearing. So, the public hearing is for everybody to be heard, all the comments, questions to be asked, but the public hearing is not a Q and A session. And so, all questions that are asked during the public hearing will be answered once the public hearing is closed. So, if one person speaks, five people speak, or more than that, they will all be answered once the public hearing is closed. That way, we all understand, so please do not burn time during your time to talk, waiting on one of us to answer a question. We will answer all questions once the public hearing is closed. Alright.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open citizens' communication. This is a time for you to speak on anything that is not on the current agenda at hand, if you'd like to come forward. Seeing no one, we will move on to the consent agenda, as we have no old business. Consent agenda tonight has three items. Commissioners, is there any that need to be removed from this? Two annexations, I mean, I'm sorry, one annexation and two final plats. If not, I'll take a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, oh, I'm so sorry, I motion a second. May we please include the minutes from the October?
Thank you.
Packet and regular scheduling.
There you go.
Removed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our first agenda item tonight?
Yeah, that's a...
Oh, that's you.
The MEMS Trail appeal. Actually, the next two items both relate to appeals to waiver denials for MEMS Trail. These were both turn lane waiver requests. They're separated up into a left turn, a left turn lane request and a right turn lane request. Both were denied. They're appealing both of them. The description of the waivers in your packet along with a response letter. This is on, this is on Mill Creek Road. And I guess I should mention north of there, at the links crossing development, there are similar turn lanes installed for that development. If you have any other questions about this, I can answer them.
You said that there were, they were existing now or being built?
I don't know if they're finished being built now, but they're bonded, so they're supposed to go in with the development, and they will be if they're not completed yet.
Okay, thank you. We will take these one at the time, and the first one is right turn D cell lane. This waiver does not require a public hearing, so if the applicant is here and wishes to speak.
Good evening. Brett Basquen with the Forside Group representing the applicant. Alright, so, here's the manual requirements for turn lanes. It says, well, high-volume turn lanes, when they're, when high-volume turn lanes are warranted, you know, that they'll, that they're being required for left turn lanes and right turn lanes. And then in this deceleration section, it says unless determined by the city engineer based upon the development parameters of the traffic projections. We did do a traffic study. The traffic study counts were performed in April, and we did turn lane warrants to determine whether turn lanes were warranted on this section of road. On this particular section of road, what was collected was only a thousand cars. It's a thousand cars. It's only a thousand cars. When we look at the turn lane warrants associated with a thousand cars on the road for the turn lanes, this is, the blue line indicates on whether a left turn lane is warranted. We're way over on the red dot. We would have to be on the other side when it's warranted. The turn lane for a left turn lane on this particular road is nowhere close to being warranted. Even on the right turn lane, it's the same thing. The blue line is, if you're on the right side of the blue line in regards to, now, turn lanes are, are, it's, it, they're, these are engineering equations. These are not engineering equations that we make up as traffic engineers. These are engineering equations that are based upon the Institute of, the ITE Manual Transportation Engineering that gives these requirements on when they're warranted and when they're not warranted. And in this particular case, on a road of only a thousand cars per day, it's, they're not, they're not, they're not close to being warranted. So, even if you pull back and you look at a bigger scale here, okay, in particular this, Mill Creek Road connects Shell Tumor and it, and Sand Hill Road. Shell Tumor is somewhat limited in regards to if, its use, right? People are not going to come Shell Tumor and come down Mill Creek in a commuter roll, right? If you're trying to go east-west, most people are using Shell Tumor as a back way from Morse Mill to get to eighty-five, or from eighty-five trying to get to the backside of Morse Mill without having to go through a lot of, the other way, right? In regards to Sand Hill Road, Sand Hill Road is a, is a, is a, is a east-west linking, but we don't, the only people that are using Mill Creek Road are going to be these subdivisions that are on Mill Creek Road. So, in regards to like how much of Mill Creek Road is developed and how many more cars are we expecting on there, we're not, you know what I mean? Even if we double it, even two thousand cars a day or three thousand cars a day, we're still not going to be anywhere near in this particular section of, of, of Mill Creek Road. Now, where we took our counts was in our area of Mill Creek Road. Further north, where there's an entrance of Mill Creek and there's the entrance of, of the, of MEM, the other entrance to MEMS Trail and to the subdivision across the street. You know, there may be more vehicles up there, and so turn lanes may be warranted up there. We had to put turn lanes in for the other entrance of, of MEMS Trail up there, and, and they have them there. But in this particular section, there's only a thousand cars per day. We feel like this entrance is probably going to be just a back entrance into MEMS Trail. Most people who are going to be coming to MEMS Trail are probably going to be coming from Shell Tumor or drive through the, going to the first entrance on Mill Creek, not this back way. We feel like this is going to be more of a secondary back entrance than a main entrance to the main subdivision there that's connected all the way through. Even the future land use plan, now that the future land use plan that's up for tonight, it's proposing to change our area to what we're proposing it to for residential. But the other green in between is being recommended for large lot residential, so it's only one acre minimum lots. So, my point is, it's not like we're going to get a ton more density in this area that's going to use this section of road. Again, this is just a zoning map showing that. And so, kind of in summary, there's only a thousand cars on Mill Creek Road in this section. The future zone is mainly rural and low-density residential, some large lot residential. And so, in regards to putting in these turn lanes, you know, if these were warranted, there'd be no question here. But these things are not anywhere being warranted on a road of this, of this low volume. And so, we just don't feel like it's appropriate to be putting in turn lanes on roads where it's not warranted. So, be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, so this is, this is the traffic count as of today, not once the development gets in, right?
Well, no, even when, so even, that's the count today. We, we, so, when we do the traffic study, we project the growth of traffic-
Right.
-as well as the other projects in the area, as well as adding in the new trips for our development.
And so, that's a thousand?
No, that's the existing count today. Even when you add the-
And what is the, what is the addition?
With the growth of this new development, oh, it's going to be less than two thousand cars.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's...
So, how about looking at that, go back and look at the data?
Yeah.
Back a couple slides. So, pick, pick-
This is a left turn.
We're doing right.
Right, okay. On the right turn.
So, how does that change, if you say less than two thousand, and let's say you add fifteen hundred, how does it change that diagram right there? Where's that triangle moved to?
So, when you're looking at these turn lane requirements, you're looking for the, and it's, it's different for the right turn lane and the left turn lane. So, on the, on the, on the right turn lane, we're talking about. So, basically, it's based, it's based upon the number of right turns that are going to be made, and the volume on that same stretch of road, on that same direction, right? So, if I'm, if I'm headed in this particular location, I would be coming from Sand Hill, going northbound to turn right into MEMS Trail.
Okay.
So, it's going to be, it's, it's, it's the number of right turns with the volume of right-through movements, right? The amount of volume coming up and down, or just going north on there. So, that's how the right turn is, is warranted.
So, so across the, across the Y-axis then, X-axis, you have then, that is the road volume, which in this case would be close to two thousand, not sixteen hundred.
Yes, but then, we're looking at vehicles per hour when we're talking about-
I see.
-the warrant, okay? We're talking about, I'm talking about there's a thousand cars over the day. What this is showing is, in the peak hour, we're projecting, you know, three hundred and eighty cars going northbound, and we're projecting only twenty right turns at the, you know what I mean? In that same one-hour timeframe, right?
That's at peak?
At, at, at the peak, yep. But like on a, on a residential neighborhood like this, most of our traffic is going to be in the AM and PM peak, because that's when everybody's leaving and going to work and coming home and going to work. You know what I mean? Midday is, you know, especially out in this particular part of, in a rural area like this, midday, there's really no commuter traffic in this area during midday. And so, that's how it is for the right turn. I know we're talking about the right turn. I can explain the left turn if you want, or we?
Sure, go ahead and go with the left.
Okay, so, yeah, so, so the left is, is, is the, is the same thing. So, it, it's just opposite. So, it's the number of left turns I'm making, but I'm, I'm looking at it compared to the advancing volume, so who I'm turning against.
Right.
Not necessarily how many people are going in my same direction.
Right.
So, that's how the left turn. So, in this particular case, the advancing volume in that direction is, you know, a hundred and twenty-five, right? And we have, you know, we're probably, you know, less than fifty left turns in there. Because in, in our site, what we're saying, just so we can, just so we're on the same page in regards to here, what we're saying is, a majority of the people entering and exiting this driveway are going to be going to and from the north. They're going to be coming to and from Mill Creek Road up there and, and, and are going to be dispersing on Shell Tumor to either go back towards Morse Mill or go to college and go into town. We're, we're thinking that a majority of the people, right, eighty, seventy-five, eighty percent of the people are going to be going and coming from that direction, and very few people coming from Sand Hill, from the Sand Hill side. Because you're not going to get off on eighty, if I'm coming home, you're not going to get off on eighty-five and drive past the Shell Tumor intersection to go down to Sand Hill and then work your way back up.
And most traffic is heading in town, right?
It is headed into town, correct. So, we think, so there's hardly going to be anybody coming, turning right into this development, right? As opposed to, you know, if anything, we're going to have, if, if anybody's going to be turning into our development at this particular location, most people, if anybody, are going to be turning left into here, because that's where a majority of the truck is coming from.
Is it one-way in and out through that one access point?
No, so, this development is connected all the way through to the existing MEMS Trail subdivision. We're connected through there. So, the current MEMS Trail has one connection on Mill Creek further north, and then we have two other connections on Shell Tumor at the, at the top. And so, both of those roads-
No, 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 that's not what I was asking. Sorry. So, there's that, where we're trying to put this particular, these, these D cell lanes. So, that's, that, there's another entrance to that, to this development that you're trying to build.
Correct. That's what these turn lanes are for.
See that?
Right, yeah, it's not on here as a plat.
What's the zoning of that property south of this?
That's, yeah, that's Duffner's house.
Yeah, 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 so it's NC nine, and currently it's one residence. I guess it's-
NC nine?
Yeah, it's NC nine. So, so, so I guess if that were ever to sell, it could be a lot, a lot of houses.
Yeah, I mean, that particular parcel that you're talking about, right, that was originally part of the same development on the other side of Mill Creek.
Right, right.
Went bankrupt and bought it from the bank and basically built his own house, built him a house.
And what are the number of homes that can be, that you have a plat for?
In this particular section?
It's one sixty-two.
Yeah, one sixty-two.
One sixty-two.
One sixty-two. But to our, to our, yeah, to our south, that NC nine doesn't have, doesn't have sewer. The one across the street's on a lift station, but this one drains the other way towards-
And the city's position is that this is a collector street and posted forty-five miles per hour, and so as a consequence, they want to keep the traffic flowing freely, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. But, correct. The city's perspective, from my understanding, is whether it's a collector or arterial, turn lanes are required no matter, no matter what.
This might be, this might be more towards engineering. So, are there, there other D cell lanes on, this is what MEMS, Mill Creek Road, Mill Creek, is that what this is? I can't read it, so I can't tell what's-
That's Mill Creek Road.
Mill Creek.
There's one at the entrance to the development Brett mentioned across the street. I think that was called the Landings at the time. It may be called something else now.
South of that location?
South of that, there's a right turn D cell lane into that development, and as Dan mentioned, the ones that are either existing or proposed for links crossing.
So, there's some north of it too?
Correct.
Their traffic's a little more heavy also up there.
It's posted forty-five miles per hour. What is the site? Is there any issues with site distance on coming in and out?
On this particular, I mean, this road is posted forty-five miles an hour, but the road is built for probably only twenty-five or thirty. I mean, it is a hairpin, turns, it's a tight road. It's a rural road. How you can get forty-five on there is, 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 you know, is very difficult. But in regards to site distance, yeah, we have adequate site distance for that, for the site.
I have another question. So, the city's position is, if it's a collector or arterial, we need these lanes. So, is that regardless of what a traffic study tells us?
Yeah, that requirement was changed, I want to say maybe twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
Do you recall the-
That it would be required regardless if a traffic study says it's warranted or not. And that was done to preserve our future capacity, our roadways.
But I mean, it's the same requirement is, if, if we were in a commercial setting, right, and it's still not warranted, and we would be on Glen, right? So, I have projects that I've, that are on Glen Avenue, right, that don't warrant turn lanes, but it's a major thoroughfare, so the city wants turn lanes. So, in regards to like, so, it's my understanding, this was put in the, in the manual to be as a catch-all, and then there's, there's, there's ways to get exempted from it. But there's two different scenarios. If I'm in a commercial setting in downtown and turn lanes are warranted, right, or not warranted, I can understand why we put them in, right? Because it's a major thorough, major road, ten, fifteen thousand cars a day, right? In regards to this particular type of situation, this is a low-volume road. There's not going to be commuter traffic coming through here. There's, it's not. It's, it's, it's overkill to have right and turn lane, right and left turn lanes when hardly anybody's going to be coming northbound to make a right turn into this development.
Do we know how much future development is planned for that area? Because I drove out that way, and there is a property that is, that has a right D cell lane. No houses are built on it yet, so I'm just asking some questions.
Like where at, on Mill Creek?
Yeah, towards Shell, the Shell Tumor in, on Mill Creek, yeah.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's phases in yellow right there that are, that are being built right now, that are, that, there's two entrances across the street that, that is, part of that has been, is being redeveloped as residential right there.
I have a question, Brett. So, if, I don't remember the size, because the size of this hasn't come up, does it stay on the property, on your property, if you do a D cell lane, right D cell lane?
No, it goes off. I mean, our frontage is only about fifty feet, you know what I mean? We barely have enough to get our drive out. So, there's, there's adjacent residential, neighborhood, residential has two driveways that would be in the middle of the right turn lane to the south of us.
In this development on further north in phases, they would likely use Shell Tumor Parkway as well.
Yeah, I mean, for the most part, yes. And they have two entrances, but all their entrances are north of us, right? They align with the original entrance in the MEMS Trail off of there, and then they have one more on the south side there. But I don't anticipate them, if they continue extending down, they're, they're not planning on building new entrances, right? You know, they got two main entrances, and, and so all their driveways are going to be north of ours.
And, and on the future land use plan, south of there, off of Sand Hill, what, what is that zoned in the future? Is that rural, all rural, or a large lot, or what?
Are you talking about like immediately south?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's NC nine, and so NC nine isn't, it's going to be-
Not of theirs, but around Sand Hill, not, not off of Mill Creek.
Everything pretty much on Sand Hill is going to be rural?
Because there's no sewer.
Yeah.
The sewer plan is to the west, but everything falls the other way, so. Everything on Sand Hill will remain, is, is all rural, in the existing and in the future land use.
And how many lots and how many cars are they going to put out? Hundred and sixty-two lots, so that's what-
But you have connectivity through, you know, part of, you know, twenty-five of our lots are not even accessible through this part of the development. They are only accessible from the north.
Yeah.
And just like the same thing is, and that's what I'm saying is, I, you know, this is more of a back entrance into this thing. This is not the main entrance into here. I think people will use it, don't get me wrong. But I think a majority of the people are going to be going and, and, and using the internal development to, to access the road network.
Any other questions, commissioners? Need a decision on the first, which is a right D cell lane off of Mill Creek Road.
I move to approve P C case W Z twenty twenty-four oh twelve.
To approve to?
To approve.
No, no turn lane?
To approve the waiver.
Approve the waiver, okay. I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve right D cell lane waiver. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Nonnet Reese?
Yes.
Dana Camp?
Yes.
Phil Chancellor?
No.
David Wisdom?
Yes.
Joseph A. Stroke?
Yes.
Jennifer Stevens?
Yes.
Oscar Mosley?
No.
Five to two.
Thank you. Okay, now for the left turn lane.
I move to approve PC case WZ twenty twenty-four zero one eight to approve the waiver.
I have a motion on the table for approval of the waiver.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Nonnet Reese?
Yes.
Dana Camp?
No.
Phil Chancellor?
No.
David Wisdom?
Yes.
Joseph A. Stroke?
Yes.
Jennifer Stevens?
No.
Oscar Mosley?
No.
Three to four.
Thank you. Okay.
So that did not, you say three to four, it did not pass?
Correct, that did not pass.
That one did not.
So they're putting in a.
Not putting in a right, and it will. Okay, we will move to the next, which is a big item on our agenda tonight, comp plan twenty thirty amendments.
Yeah, thank you, so, so yes. There's a lot here, so everything that was kinda in the agenda were, uh, the text amendments. And so there was a summary of each chapter and kinda what all was changed, just kinda in, on each chapter level, and so there's updates to tables, updates, uh, to different numbers, different statistics, and big years. And so that was kinda the hard summary, I can kinda go over that, and so what we included was the text changes to every single chapter in the packet. And so all the red line, all the things that were changed, that way you all could see what was changed, and if you guys had any questions about them, you guys could ask. Uh, I think the thing that a lot more people were interested in, that we got a lot more feedback on, just kinda in the public input sessions, and the biggest thing, part of the five-year comp plan update, is the future land use map. And so the complicated thing with the five-year update is that the future land use map, I guess if we were to publish all the corrections and changes and everything, there are over three hundred of them. Uh, most of those being, you know, corrections, just kinda match what the current development pattern is. A lot of the things that were, that we got feedback on, that people wanted to see changed, were the future land use map and the proposed growth changes. And so what we have is a presentation that references that, so that's why in this, in the agenda, or not in the agenda, in the packet, it references that it's available online. And so we do have a slide deck online where you can, it's not a slide deck, but a application where you can go, go to the future land use map, slide through it and see what the proposed changes are, and how they look, and then. Find your address, kinda see if there are any changes near you, and so I kinda, what we put together was a presentation on all the optimal boundary stuff and the proposed growth changes, and then I can answer any questions, um, from you all, or from the public. So, um, I guess we'll go to the next slide. Alright, so, I s, one of the things that, that I just wanna stress, so there were several. Different parts of this, so there were the correction changes, and like we talked about, those are the, those are similar to the last case with MEMS Trail, it was proposed to be one thing, and then it would develop as something else. So that would be a correction, and that is one of, that's the most numerous one, that one's, and there's two hundred and fifty of those. Where it's just, the correction is reflecting what has already been developed there, that's not really a staff thing or council thing, that's just kinda already what has happened. Now, this is a growth change of something that is currently happening, and this is gonna be reflected. So out here on Distribution Drive, there's already industrial development, it's not currently in the city, it is just getting ahead of it, that way it doesn't have to rezone, and this would be a proposed growth change and changing this to industrial. Um, so I, I'll just kinda roll through these, and I guess you guys kinda ask questions kinda as we go, since we've, we've already seen this, so go to the next slide, please. Alright, so growth change number two, this is kinda off Beehive Road, we have action associated with this property later tonight, in fact, but this was something that is a staff proposed change. Uh, I, city's been pretty active in acquiring a lot of property out here, as you see, the blue dot is a property that was annexed, brought in. Like I said, there's been a lot of action with this over the past several months, and then this is a change that is gonna be codifying that as light and industrial out here on Beehive Road. Alright, so this is the one where it kinda deviates from what I showed you all when we had our public work session. So if you guys remember, the large chunk to, the large purple chunk to the east, that was a small sliver of, it's not a small sliver, I'd, I'd say like a square, like the top square of that was going to be industrial, and then there's gonna be some medium to high density. And then the rest of it was kinda, kinda phased out as you get to Shadwick Lane. There's been a, there've been shift, and now the lar, the entirety of that chunk is going to be industrial. And so the effects of that is that it kinda threw off the metrics for what, how many dwelling units were gonna come out of that, to what the new proposed change would be. And so now, it's still gonna be medium density, and like I said, that's just more to accommodate the request of the property owners that we've had, to give them the flexibility of development, just because that entire area can handle. Uh, with the, with the infrastructure that's going through there, just from a utility standpoint, it can handle a lot more development, like I said, it's more to give the property owners the flexibility of development that, that they see fit. And then also, this, the other change is along Lee Road fifty-five, instead of making that rule, it goes to limited residential, which is one acre lots, to not create a bunch of non-compliancees when they come in, cause no, no lot on that road is three acres. Next one, please.
What was the reason for the industrial? Was that because of a request from staff, or just because we need it, or?
Yes.
IDB?
Yes. So, so, so I guess, uh, cleanest answer would be, that was, that was an internal request that would be, I guess would amount to a staff, staff request and change, that that entire parcel remain industrial and not, uh, high-density resident, mixed-use residential.
But it wasn't the landowner that requested it stay there?
That, they are the landowner.
The IDB is land.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So currently, that's industrial?
No, it's not, it's not. Yeah, yeah, it's just land. Yep, just rural. Alright, so this is a change, uh, out on Cox Road, this was, uh, this was a property owner requested change. Uh, the property owner, I guess what this was, was commercial, and the property owner worked tirelessly to get commercial on the property with gas stations, some of the things in the veins of Flying J's pilot, and she got a lot of denial letters, and she would like it to be residential instead. Because she's been approached by several builders and not people who are interested in commercials, so that's what this change is, is a change that reflects the will of the property owner. Alright, so this, so this change up on Farmville Road, uh, this is, so it reflects kinda what's already there, kinda on the, I guess it's the eastern side, where Lee Road eighty-three and Farmville Road intersect. And then kinda as you move west, it's all residential, and so the reason that this was rural, and had been rural for a while, there are a lot of issues with utilities and kinda questions, kinda getting that figured out. I think kinda, uh, over re, recent months, we've been able to work, work within kinda that development is viable here, there isn't like a utility. I wouldn't say utility obstacle anymore, so the proposed land use change for this, um, is low-density residential, and I think this is, I would say this is combined of, you know, staff and, uh, property owner. I guess property owner's been trying, trying to develop this, it's just kinda trying to figure out the logistics of actually, how do you bring utilities to the site, and then what could it actually support? So, I'd say combined, uh, requests, and also just kinda them showing and proving to the city that, that utilities could work on site. Alright, this is a staff initiated change, so this is really just a swap in between where some industrial could go and then where, where, uh, commercial can go, but this is a staff initiated change. And this is, you know, so if you wanna go back to the other one. Yeah, so this is just kinda, kinda flipping where, uh, kinda along Corporate and, uh, down by Buc-Ee's, just, just kinda orient everybody. Um, I spend my, I spend all day looking at maps, so, sure for everybody in the audience, um, alright, then we go to the next one. Okay, so, I'd say that this one's kinda, kinda similar, uh, we've gotten some requests from, from property owners, just kinda about this, and then I think also just kinda from the staff side, to look, looking at this, just kinda what the existing land use is in some of this area. And just kinda how this is already developing, utilizing Reese Avenue as the cutoff for us from a zoning standpoint, makes a lot more sense, just kinda with the. School serving as the hard geographical boundary and not going any further east with UNS, and then also with Reese Avenue serving as a hard southern boundary, not going any further. And like, like I said, we got several, several requests from property owners, uh, just kinda inquiring about, hey, can we at least get a conversation about this? And I, I said, I think from the staff side, just the geographical boundary, and then kinda how that area's changed and developed. Staff supported this, so.
These, um, changes and some cleanup are the property owners notified of this?
Yeah, so, I.
Haven't been part of the conversation.
Yeah, so I, I guess not, not at, not as a whole, since I mean, some, some of these are massive swaps, I, I think on some of these, it, it just kinda depends, like in the, a lot of stuff that was converted down by Beehive Road, as y'all know, uh, those property owners came out. Uh, they were, um, very active, and I think on some of these other ones, uh, some have and some haven't, I, I think so, sometimes you just have more engaged property owners. I think oddly enough, on the next one, which is just the road corridor, we had a lot of property owners come out, who wanted to know where the outer loop was gonna go, so I, I, it's a mix, it kinda depends on, uh, what, what project where.
At least the people that have butted it are getting notified, the standard approach.
No, so, so since, so since we had, since this, since this is just, just the cleanup, I, I guess, and this isn't, you know, rezoning someone's property actively, this is just a proposed future land use change, because the act of what they can do with their property today does not change, this is just the future land use. So this is more for the development community, or people who, people who may have ambitions to sell land, et cetera. Alright, so, wanna go to the next one. So, like I said, and so this one is the outer loop corridor, I'm kinda, kinda looking at that one, we got, we had a, a lot of con, we had a lot of contact about this at the public engagement meetings, there were several property owners who were smack dab in the middle of this and wanted it to move. So there, there, there's a lot, lot, lot of conversation about that, and I think this is one of the areas that's also proposed as a continued, uh, future focus study that we need to look at, just cause there's been a lot more development, especially between, south of Martin, south, south of Martin Luther King Drive and Cox Road. So just kinda looking at the alignment of that and what that's gonna look like. Slide. Alright, so then the famous optimal boundary, so, yeah, we had a lot of conversation around the optimal boundary this year, just with several annexations that, that we'll get to. But OBR stands for removed from the optimal boundary, and then OBA will stand for added to the optimal boundary. Due to some changes from what we wanted to keep in the optimal boundary, and I think some of the sentiment that we kinda received just from council discussion, and some of their future decisions. I know initially, the effort of the optimal boundary was more balancing, I think one of the things that we looked at was, does it really make sense to have the optimal boundary extended out to areas to the far periphery and the far reaches of the city? And so there were some places where things were initially in, in the optimal boundary, and then they, they've been trimmed, and so for anybody, this is, I guess that's, uh, Willis Park Beehive Road, uh, but also Los Angeles High School, so that will now be outside of the optimal boundary, I'll go to the next one. So this kinda, everything kinda outweighed on, uh, Beehive Road, county line, those things, you know, pasture land, never gonna, gonna come in, uh, those are proposed to be removed from the optimal boundary as well. So, now this is Hill and Dale Drive, we had a lot of action on this, uh, late, uh, earlier this year, and just with council's votes to allow these things in the optimal boundary, we extended the optimal boundary to that. Looks like a parcel line, I don't wanna say a section line, and I guess the, the road, the road that appears that is there, that just deadens into somebody's property, that's not. Um, there's, there aren't houses along that road, it's, it's all bacon down there, so. And then cleanup, some things around there, and then on this, uh, this one, this is Winterhawk Drive, and so it extends all the way to Lee Road twenty-seven, and like we discussed. These were all included because they take access off of Winterhawk Drive, which is a city road, already paved, Lee Road is a dirt road, Lee Road twenty-seven is a dirt road, and not a city road, so they haven't left out. And this is cleaning up, uh, initial one, the without the boundary bisected the neighborhood, and then, uh, optimal boundary five, change five, that little sliver was left out for whatever reason, and so now it is being added, so. Alright. Next, okay, so I guess you can go back, so, I, so if you have any detailed questions, just kinda around residential units, you know, how much acreage, et cetera. Uh, cause I think on the very first thing that, that I shared, there's a summary of all, all the numbers of just kinda like what that looked like, um, we can put that together, kinda, kinda, kinda share that with you all, I think one of the things that, that we'll do is, we do wanna have this available, I, I don't wanna hide behind. You know, this is just a lot of information and kinda being, being shrewd about it, I, I think we, we are gonna, uh, probably, probably publish this and put this on our website, if anyone hasn't checked it out, on, on the comp plan, on the website, there's an, it's the AIGM, the Auburn Interactive Growth Model. Very great presentation, has a very, um, in-depth slideshow, very informative of kinda how all these things come together, from the future land use to the optimal boundary, to all the different inputs. A lot of the methodology as well, so if you really wanna get into it and kinda see how we developed a lot of this, and kinda what informed a lot of thinking on there, it would, it, it is on the website, and like I said, so once we. Put together a lot of the data and kinda, kinda slideshow, we'll, we'll put that on the website as well, that way it's not just something that's buried in a staff report, it will be on the website and accessible for the public to, to reach and access, so. That, turnover, if you have any questions.
Thank you, this does require a public hearing, so let's go ahead and open the public hearing to all of you, this is a very high level with a lot of information. If you have questions, please come forward. Good, no one, we will close the public hearing, commissioners, questions?
Well, I'd just like to make a comment on this, cause, you know, this is a really important document for our city and how we're, uh, developing into the future, and, and it's just our look right now. You know, and, and so it's, it's well worthwhile getting on that website and kinda seeing what's out there, and what we're thinking, because as time goes on, this is gonna change again. Uh, and so you can be part of that process as well, and, and this is a good time to be out in front of the change, instead of waiting till the high-rise goes up downtown, you know, and. That, that was planned years and years ago, you know, and so this is the same thing for our future out, you know, twenty thirty and beyond, so. It, dude, you know, if you have, to have some interest, do take some time to look at that website.
I wanna thank staff, uh, for all your hard work and diligence on this, you guys, you guys did some heavy lifting here, and, uh, we appreciate it as commissioners, and I just wanted to say thank you.
That's great, but I do need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, next, we have a rezoning.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi there.
So this is a request for rezoning of approximately five point two acres from a split zoning of CDD and DDH to a single zoning of comprehensive development district. The property is located as eight one eight Bedell Avenue. And if you can see, uh, property in the northern half is, uh, CDD, and the southern half is DDH. The existing use of the property is a forty-unit, uh, multiple, multifamily development, which is a conditional use in both DDH and CDD. An office building on site was recently remodeled to a dwelling unit in the DDH section of the property, exceeding the allowable density. This request is a retroactive attempt to become compliant with the zoning ordinance. The future land use map in the, uh, comp plan twenty thirty designates this property as neighborhood preservation. This designation is for stable existing neighborhoods with existing density and housing types that should be retained. Currently, the density of the property is about seven point six dwelling units per acre. A rezoning of CDD will allow a density of nine point five dwelling units per acre, which is equal to about fifty units, that is ten units more. Further, a rezoning of CDD will also allow several commercial land uses permitted by right in this property, which is in conflict with the future land use plan. So based on these facts, the staff recommends denial of the rezoning request.
Thank you. This rezoning does require a public hearing, I'd like to go ahead and open that at this time, if you have any comments or questions about Oakley Cove. Like to open that public hearing now? No one, is the applicant here? If, um, I'd, let me close the public hearing, seeing no one, we'll close that, and if you have any comments or.
Yeah, so, uh.
Will you please come forward to the? And please state your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Michael McLean, and I work for Brookhaven Properties that owns Oakley Cove eleven eighty-eight Bedell Ave. Uh, we currently have an office that, uh, we purchased the, uh, apartment complex, Bedell Village around the corner, we condensed the, uh, two offices to one at Bedell, so we have a freestanding building sitting there. We would like to just have its own one property, so that we would meet the requirements to have one more apartment for a resident involved, that's basically the whole thing in a nutshell.
Okay, alright. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff or applicant on this?
So what would be the, this is a staff question, I guess, more than anything else, and I'm not sure who to point at. So in this particular, the way it's zoned now, the conversion that was done would, is non-conforming, right?
Kinda, non-conforming implies that it was already existing, and so then the ordinance changed, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, but it was, it was built, let me put it this way, it was built in such a way that it did not meet the requirements of the zoning that was there.
Correct, the renovation, yes.
So before, so the proper, so this is basically, now we're going back and let's, let's fix it so that we can leave it in place as it is, as opposed to, what would be the normal procedure for getting this done? You know, if we did it the right way?
Yeah, so.
Rezone first?
Yeah, 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 definitely rezone first, yeah. And I think kind of, probably coming to us, kind of talking through it, like we talked about with the pre-app situation, and I think on a, on a lot of these, like I said, I mean, we get a lot of requests where people are either buying new apartment complexes or buy old ones, and then, you know, they renovate them, different extents. So some of them, you know, they break apart bigger apartments, make them more units, some condense other apartments, make them more bedrooms, less units.
Part of our infill.
Certainly, 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 it happens a lot, happens a lot. And so oftentimes, the limiting factor is the zoning ordinance, and sometimes, sometimes it is a tremendous asset to the city to allow that, and like they can do it within the confines of the zoning, or they might stretch for another one. And then sometimes, like I said, I had one earlier this year where someone called and asked, thought about it for a couple of days, it wasn't something that made any sense for us to allow, so it's just part of the process.
So my problem with this is that this sets a precedence that I don't think is a good precedence to set, because now you're gonna have people that, well, this will do this, and then we'll go back and ask mother, you know, ask forgiveness. I'm not sure that's a good way to execute good planning, anyway, that's my comment.
My, let me make my comment then. My problem is, there is quite a bit of difference between a CDD zone and what is allowed there than in a DDH. DDH is family oriented to unrelated. CDD can be just about anything that you want to put there, you could put a dollar store there, and it can be five unrelated, and so that's the problem I have with changing from DDH to CDD, especially in the middle of the street where it's DDH on both sides. So I can't support this change.
The requesting to go CDD, if they went the other way, does density work?
I don't think so, because CDD is almost double DDH, so I think CDD is nine and a half and DDH is five and a half, and so.
Right, which is 9.5.
Yeah.
But there's, I mean, there's what, 40 units?
Forty current, yes.
Questions or comments, motions?
So my concern is that is, as this gets approved, then that just opens up the rest of the DDH landowners to then go seek, you know, additional relief, and.
Just to be clear, we are not adding anything to the blueprint of the property, the building's already existing, it's sitting there idly. We're not asking to put up additional units, it's there already, we just want to remodel it and make a one-bedroom apartment for somebody.
Right. And so with that one extra unit, that is what's causing our density level issue?
Yeah, and I guess also kind of to the point, it was kind of secondary in the report, but changing it to CDD, like, CDD has a lot of things that are permitted by right.
Right, I'm, this, my question is not related to making it fully CDD.
Yep, 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 it's the density, and so, and so if someone goes over by one, or I mean, that's something that someone would not get a CO for, so.
Okay. Questions for applicant or staff?
And just so, just so I'm clear, we're talking about one bedroom?
Yes.
Correct, because they're different, yeah, so the different zoning districts, some districts are governed by, density is done by the bed, some density is done by the unit.
And so the concern is that if this waiver were approved, then the owner has the right.
Owner and everybody under this microphone. I want to be very clear, I think kind of the, one of the things that Auburn has taught me for sure, if it is good for the gooseman, it is good for the gander, and people, people are gonna show up to ask.
Gotcha.
I mean, just, the very next day.
Any future, future owner of this property too?
Right, which is why I was asking my question. I fully agree, I don't, I don't think CDD is the way to go for this particular section of land, fully. My question was more related, what are other options, and have we looked at all of those options for this one unit on this property to?
I don't think that we have, I think that that's one of the things also that I've been pretty strident about, I like, I do try to find solutions in some situations, and I think sometimes like a rezoning, or, you know, and in other situations, just may not be applicable. So I guess that is something that we can kind of talk through and kind of see if there are other solutions to be had here, other than the rezone.
Other than rezone. Okay, commissioners, still need a motion or movement forward in some way?
Make a note, motion to deny the changing from DDH to CDD, RZ 2024-010.
Have a motion?
I'll second it.
I have a second, all those in favor for the denial of rezoning to CDD, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Special carries, please get with staff and see if there's other options for you for this one unit. Annexation?
Good evening, this request before you is for annexation of 178 acres. It's located north of Highway 280, east of Stonewall Road. It is contiguous to the city limits on its western boundary, and the property has frontage along Stonewall Road, which is a collector's street maintained by Lee County. The property is located near the northern limit of the optimal boundary. The applicant has a subsequent request on tonight's agenda to apply the conservation overlay district designation to this property. We'll talk about that next, and for this, the request meets the criteria for annexation and staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. For most of you here this evening, I know that you're here for this. Annexation at this time does not require a public hearing. The next agenda item for rezoning has a public hearing, okay? I just don't want you to get mad at me for not allowing you to speak this evening. Annexation, and this is not a pre-annexation for anything?
No, that's a good question. So the applicant came in, had a pre-app meeting, and initially, there were three items they wanted, the annexation, the rezoning, and the preliminary plat. They have decided to pull back on the preliminary plat, and it's mentioned in the staff report that they want to do that in January. They would like the annexation to be held from council until the rezoning, that way they can be, that way they can be considered simultaneously. For everyone in the audience, there is a longer runtime of publication for rezonings, and so rezonings do not hit until the following month, like normally, like an exact calendar date, after the planning commission meeting, so it'll be at the second meeting in December. And so normally, the annexation would go next Tuesday, but it is going to hold until the rezoning is heard, that way they can be held, heard simultaneously by council.
I think it would be helpful, if possible, to really emphasize when we get to the rezoning, what this positive and negative is, since we don't have the prelim plat.
Okay, we can, we can do that.
Okay. Annexation of 178 acres does not require a public hearing. Questions, comments, motions, please?
Move to approve the annexation of AX 2024-027.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Now we will move to the request to apply the conservation overlay district designation to the 178 acres north of Highway 280, east of Stonewall Road. The property will receive the zoning, the rural zoning district designation upon annexation. And with the conservation development, the goals of that are to lessen the environmental impact of the development, minimize impervious surfaces, and to preserve natural resources. And to achieve those goals, the conservation overlay district allows smaller lot sizes, clustering of the development to minimize the impact and disturbance of area. The 50% of the subject property must remain as conservation area. In this case, that would equate to, gosh, what am I up here? 89 acres, and the applicant is proposing to keep 92 acres of that property as conservation area. The COD designation does allow smaller lot sizes than would otherwise be required under the rural zoning district. However, the maximum density is limited to that density allowed by the underlying district. So in this case, 178 acres would permit 59 lots, and no more than 59 lots would be permitted with or without that designation. As mentioned, the applicant intends to submit their preliminary plat request in January. We do recommend approval of the rezoning, the application of the COD district. Two conditions of the approval. An open space maintenance plan and instrument of permanent protection will be required to be in place before the final plat can be submitted for review. And these will be binding documents that will ensure the conservation areas are protected in perpetuity.
Those go run with the land, doesn't matter what.
Great. So, so let me, let me make sure I got this correct, so if this would just remain rural, they could do 59 lots?
Correct.
As of right now, if we had not annexed it, they could have done it?
They could have done, that's right. But since we're doing the conservation overlay, they'll still just have 59 districts.
Correct, and the concept plan shows the typical lot size will be just over an acre, about 1.2 acres.
And who will be responsible for maintaining the open space in this plan?
There are multiple ways of doing that, it could be an HOA, they could dedicate it to the city. It just sort of depends on how they want to go about that.
Okay, alright, so that's an answer for later day?
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
Will you please repeat the three conditions for COD? What's its purpose?
The goals?
Yes.
To lessen the environmental impact of the development, to minimize impervious surfaces, and to preserve natural resources.
Okay, and this natural resource that we see right here on this, it runs through here, it runs to the Saga Hatchie watershed.
And Saga Hatchie watershed, that's right.
And I just also would like to note, when the plat comes back in January, there will be another public hearing at that time.
Right, well, they're all here tonight, that's why I was.
Yep.
Make sure they.
That brings up a question, I guess that has to do with the, one of the purposes of the COD overlay. It was, as I recall, was developed specifically to deal with, you know, mitigation of problems with watershed areas, right? Can you expand a little bit more on that and what's behind that thought?
Yeah, the intent is to just protect the water quality of our watersheds in and around the city. Ogletree being the major one where our drinking water source, but also Saga Hatchie as well.
This will contribute to that?
That's correct.
Thank you, and is the applicant here as well? Okay, alright, okay. This does require a public hearing. Please remember the five minutes, if you would like to come and speak with us, please sign in and state your name and address. And also, if you can keep, you know, comments, I know there's probably some repeating factors and stuff like that, but just of note for this item, agenda item, so please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Staff members. My name is Steve Reeves, 7421 Stonewall Road, Opelika, Alabama. Although my residence is in Auburn, we're so rural, we have an Opelika address. Before my wife and I bought our lot, I visited with our former planning director. He told me that any development around us would require three-acre lots, even if the property remained in the county. Part of that conversation suggested septic systems would only be approved on three-acre lots. I'm here tonight to ask the planning commission to help us maintain a three-acre lot requirement for this rural area. I think three-acre lots are more in the spirit of our rural designation, and would provide a lot of green space, provided the property was not clear cut. And three-acre lots would avoid issues associated with green space maintenance failures by the HOA or other responsible parties. It appears that maintenance of the green space and trails could ultimately fall to the city council. I doubt the city of Auburn would want to be in the position of performing that maintenance and seeking reimbursement from the residents. However, if the planning commission is inclined to recommend this annexation, well, this conservation district to the city council, what I'm looking at right now appears to be very unfriendly to the adjoining property owners. If you move forward with this annexation and overlay, please consider buffering adjoining property owners by moving some of the green space, so it is between us and the subdivision. I want to make a quick comment about the water here. I've hunted this land for a number of years. I don't recall seeing a lot of water up there. In fact, I've, and I'd like to add that while I've hunted this land for a number of years, when I walk out at night along the road, which is labeled as A Street or Street A, I can clearly see into my house from the road. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Before we go on, can we put the map, the prox map, not the one before here, yeah, there you go, thanks.
Anyone else like to come forward and speak? Yes, oh, sir.
Mr. Reeves, he'll come back soon.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mike Patterson, and the way they got that laid there.
And your address, sir?
7681 Stonewall Road, Opelika. And the way they got that laid, they gone try to put one-acre lots right against my fence line all the way down the backside of my property. And I just don't think that's right and fair to the other people in the neighborhood. If they're gonna do it, they need to stick with three-acre lots, which is zoned for three-acre lots. I don't understand how you can zone something for something and then just come up and change it. Why ever zone it if you're gonna change it? If you can change it, why do you even ever start zoning it, you know what I'm saying? I don't understand how you can have it zoned for three-acre lots and then somebody just up and say, well, we'll put one-acre lots on it. I don't understand that. It's not fair to me, and it's not fair to everybody else that lives out there that's got three-acre lots. But anyway, that's all I got to say, I'm against it.
Please sign in. Anyone else like to speak?
My name's Dave Patrick, 7550 Stonewall Road, Opelika. My wife and I currently reside there. We're across the street from this proposed. We're across the street from this proposed development, so we will not back up to it. I'm in the Plainsman Hills development. I look at this and the overlay, I just don't believe, the current plat at least, is not in the spirit of the rural district. Having all that conservation land in one location and not spread out, it's just not in the spirit of the rural district. As others have mentioned, I bought a lot, three-acre lot, I was required to have a three-acre lot. There's up for debate whether or not it's, you know, due to septic tanks or the rural development. But we were all out there with three-acre lots, because that's what we had to do. And now a developer wants to come in and put in one point two five-acre lots, I'm just not quite sure that's the fair thing to do to all the property owners in that area. But in particular, everybody that has property that backs up to this thing, it's definitely unfair to them. I mean, there's, there's no doubt about it. The Reeves and others that have property, three-acre lots, and they're gonna have two, maybe three houses connected to them looking in their backyard. So, in closing, I just don't think this plat is in the spirit of a rural district. And maybe there's some compromise, maybe there's some way you put three-acre lots and mix in some one-and-a-half-acre lots to make it up the difference, to make the space a little bit better, more appropriate for the rural district. But this current overlay is not in the spirit of the rural district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward?
Hi.
Hi.
So my name's Tamara Cadd. I live at one-six-two Grade Ellis Lane. And I'm in the Plainsman Hills subdivision that is across the street from this proposed development. I'll note, my husband and I moved here seven years ago. And a big reason we chose that lot was because of its rural nature. We didn't look at any place else that had smaller lots in town. And I have concerns about this proposal for several reasons. First and foremost, I think that permitting a one-acre lot exception, even under the guise of a COD designation, establishes a very bad precedent for this area. And it will be exploited forevermore for many other rural lots in that area who want to put in higher-density housing for profit or for other incentives. For example, a couple of years ago, we had a proposal for a lot that's close to this and had single ingress egress road access over on Heath Road. And they were looking for a one-acre exception because of the existing homes on Stonewall Road that got one-acre exceptions under a sort of a wink and a nod many years ago, when they were non-conforming lots brought in one at a time by a developer. And that exception has already been tried to be exploited. And it will only be worse if we add more one-acre lots. I see the COD zoning request as an end run around the three-acre requirement for the rural zones. If the owner and developer really want to annex themselves into Auburn, then they should play by the rules that we've all played by and stick with the three-acre lots. This is a bait and switch, or would be a bait and switch, against existing homeowners who have faithfully adhered to the three-acre lot minimum. And it would be detrimental to our values, our home values, I believe. I also question whether COD designation is necessary to preserve a floodplain from development when it's already an undevelopable floodplain. I question whether there is true conservation intention behind this request. It also would alter the character and violate the design intention of the surrounding rural zoned developments. These one-acre lot homes would inevitably be at a lower price point and quality than a three-acre home. That also will be harmful to existing homeowners in terms of property valuations. There is insufficient infrastructure to support fifty-nine more homes currently, in my opinion, whether or not they're on one-and-a-half acres or three acres. There is, there are serious traffic issues to consider on Stonewall. With sole ingress egress at one point, Lee County would not be incentivized to make developmental improvements were this annexed into Auburn, because the tax revenue benefits would flow to Auburn, not to the county. Water supply is already an issue in that area. We suffer from water pressure issues. As I've read the documents, it seems that garbage collection would not be provided by Auburn in the division. And that means there would be fifty-nine garbage pails and fifty-nine recycling bins stacked out on Stonewall Road every time traffic, trash had to be picked up, and I find that offensive. Currently, there are no public parks in this area north of two eighty. The nearest one is over five miles away, and there's citing a four-acre public park that's going to be developed on Shelton Mill, which doesn't yet exist. And I also, I'm not, by no means am I a civil engineer or a landscape expert, but I question whether one-acre lots are really sufficient to provide leach fields and drainage for septic systems in an area that is full of seasonal streams, permanent streams, and drainage ditches that feed into the permanent streams. I also have reputational concerns for the developer, who is known, a known developer of tract housing of less than ideal quality. You'd be injecting that into a neighborhood and an environment that is designed around custom homes where homeowners take tremendous pride in adding to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Please sign in.
Yep.
Good evening.
My name is Melissa Willis. I'm one-nine-one Grade Ellis Lane, so a property nearby. I echo all of Tamara's sentiments that she just mentioned. She brought up a lot of valid points that I think you all should take and consider. We have a ton of neighbors that are here tonight because we have a vested interest in this proposal not happening. I guess the main things I'd like to add to Tamara's comment is my concerns about traffic in that area. I spoke with someone from the city to see if a traffic study had been requested or if it is required. I am told at this time it has not been requested and it may not even be required, and I wonder why. In looking at the paperwork that was submitted, the proposed development would generate almost six hundred vehicle trips per day, which would greatly impact that intersection at Stonewall, where we have Auburn City schoolchildren who have to walk Stonewall daily because the bus stops there at the corner. So I'm highly concerned that we're gonna have five hundred and ninety proposed vehicle trips during those busy times. So I would love to know if a traffic study could be, would be, performed by the proposed developer and/or person requesting that this be rezoned. I also have concerns about maintaining the entrance in Stonewall Road. At this time, if it stays under the county, then there would be no plans for sidewalks. And Tamara's right, there would be no vested interest for Lee County to put in sidewalks. It would only be concern Auburn City parents, because there will be Auburn land on one side of Stonewall, Auburn land on the other, with a huge development coming into the making with no solution for traffic on that tiny county road. So those are my biggest concerns. I have a lot more, but I think Tamara hit a lot of those points. Thanks for hearing us tonight.
Absolutely, thank you.
Good evening. Name's Ashley Miller. Address, seven-four-four-one Stonewall Road, Opelika, Alabama. Steve, right? When I first moved out there in 2013, I called the post office over in Opelika and I said, "Now, why in the world do I have an Opelika address?" And he said, "Mr. Miller, they don't tell me, they don't ask me where to put the city limit sign, and they don't tell me how to deliver the mail." So, that's supposed to be funny, by the way, that's exactly what he said. And so we're here tonight talking about where the city limit signs are, where the limits are, and what we're gonna do with that. I've been a real estate agent here in Auburn for twenty-one years. I've been very blessed to be in this community and been successful because of developments and the growth of our community. I don't want to repeat most of everything that's been said. I give a wholehearted amen to it, agree with it. I do appreciate you guys putting this on there, because we get to see all of our neighbors that we usually walk the street with out at Stonewall, but now we get to come together and join forces with this. One thing I'd like to add, traffic's been mentioned, water's been mentioned. My, my property is adjacent to this. The one thing I'd like to reiterate is that when the plat, if this does move forward, that there's much consideration given to buffers to the current property. The one that's there now seems to be very unimaginative, for lack of a better term. There's not a lot of buffer there, and the concerns of that green space that'll be left is a major concern. Also, there's, there's no way to do anything about this tonight, but if you go through the overlay design, I do believe there was a three-acre limit if it was in the Ogletree Shed. Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if this is a question that needs to be answered, but there was anything outside of the COD that wasn't in the Ogletree Shed had no limits to what size those lots would be. That's already been codified in that, but I do think that's something that needs to be visited and considered. When you have something that's considered a conservation overlay and you put no limits on how small those could be, I think we're opening ourselves up to some development. They can be very detrimental to areas just like this. So as a resident, I do appreciate the time and the opportunity to speak. I do hope that this will not go through. Do not support that, this overlay district. And also, as it does, I do hope that there's opportunities to encourage this developer to come up with a better plan to provide buffers between the current owners. Thank you.
Anyone else? Sure. This is your time. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And, applicant, if we could please hear from y'all to address some of these concerns.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for the public for coming. Represent flowers and white on this property, the clients, the developers here. Wanted to just reiterate, I know you like me to talk to you guys.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I know, it's hard for me not to turn around and talk to everybody. What we've submitted is not a preliminary plat. It's an idea. We've met with the city staff, planning, engineering, water resources, everybody on how to better develop this property. Yes, we could go in, three-acre lots, develop the whole thing and clear-cut it by right.
All right.
That's not the intent of the developer. Ten of the developers to go in and minimize impact to the property. So I've heard a lot of conversations about buffers. Those are on the floor. So I'd love to talk to anybody in the public that wants buffers from theirs. We can move things around, we can adjust the, what you see here is not a plat, it's just a schematic. We've actually changed the schematic twice based on recommendations from staff to help preserve the natural resources that are on the property. So I guess with me saying that, the HOA would probably take care of the lots, I mean, of the conservation district, the trails, those sort of things. I had, I heard somebody mention parks. There's your park. So there's options here besides just making money and selling houses. There's a lot of options in this case to move things around, to get buffer yards for adjacent property owners, to make it where it's, and then I've heard also one-acre lots. I think our minimum lot is one point two. And we can adjust that because we're already under the minimum, half and half, right? So we've got a few acres to play with if we needed to accommodate adjacent property owners or bring it up to one point three acres, those sort of things.
And none of that changes the fact that you'd max only be able to have fifty-nine acres?
Fifty-nine is the max based on the current...
Three-acre lot.
So we're, we're within the regulations to do this based on the conservation easement, right? So if you do rural, three acres, divide the whole property by three acres, we get fifty-nine lots. Or you can do a conservation overlay, you still only get fifty-nine lots. No matter how you slice it, that's all you can have. So it's well within the rights to develop everything. But our client has decided, let's not do that. We'll reduce infrastructure. Give this area as a conservation. We'll protect the streams that are going through there, because there are, there's one major stream, there's a couple of fingers that stick all there, to protect that. And if there's any buffers that are required for the adjacent property owners, we're more than willing to discuss it with them.
Okay, um, most of my questions are not...
Yeah, not for staff.
Do you have any more questions? Anybody? I just want to make sure that this isn't like the final say-so, right? If we need to adjust to accommodate, I think there's room to accommodate.
That's the next step that we're gonna, that's why we're trying to put these two together.
Absolutely, and we had discussions about water and those sort of things. And that comes through the DRT process and approvals and engineering and those sort of things. This is just a concept plan. Like I said, we've talked to planning, engineering, water, and we've adjusted it to protect and how they wanted the conservation overlay to look. Originally, if you saw it, you'd probably say something different. But we've moved the lots around to protect the mainstream that comes there and protect the, you know, that's the whole point of a conservation, is to protect the environment, right? Not develop everything, so.
Okay. Thank you for answering the buffer question.
You're welcome.
And so between now and January, you, maybe any adjacent property owners you might have a conversation with?
I would be glad to. I'd be glad to. My name, everybody knows how to get in touch with me. So I would be glad to sit down, talk to adjacent property owners if we have to adjust things, absolutely. And then we would just move on through the design through DRT and the regular process.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions for the applicant? I have a question about Stonewall Road ownership. Is that, is still the county? Will it remain the county? At what point does it change, based on...
It will remain the county's until such time as we have sufficient property on both sides of the road.
And then the county gives it to you, right?
They'll give it to us today.
Yeah, they want, they want our to have it.
But yeah, until we, we meet with the county and determine if it's something that we should take based on annexation.
Let's, let me ask you a question too, on roads. We're not, we're not approving a plat or denying a plat right now. We're not even looking at a plat which will lay out streets, lots, everything. The streets inside the development, or street, whatever it's gonna be, will become city.
Yes, ma'am.
And therefore, garbage trucks will go down those roads and pick up at the houses.
Yes.
Not Stonewall.
Correct. I think the comment in the staff report is tailored to if this were a single lot development. Obviously, if it's developed into a subdivision, then that environmental services would handle it like they do other subdivisions. Okay.
Even if it's a conservation overlay?
No, I mean, if it's developed into a subdivision, traditional or conservation, the city would handle...
C Street.
Garbage and recycling services.
So let's just say we go with the rural designation, not the conservation overlay. What about garbage pickup and all the other stuff?
Yeah, same thing.
Same thing.
Same thing, yes.
Go ahead. Water and sewer is available. Didn't you say that, Packet?
Water, water sewer is not.
Okay, sewer is not.
So tell me a little more on the septic though, because what about the size of the lot sort of thing? I mean, how, I guess my real question would be how small can a lot be and you still can put a septic tank on that?
One acre, right?
In, in the city, it's one acre. The Department of Public Health kind of regulates the actual lot sizes statewide on that. I will say that when, when a house is proposed, they are responsible to show primary and secondary leach fields, and that goes with the actual building plan. So, you know, those things are required before you can actually build on a property.
Exactly. The, the thing about the septic, the city of Auburn does not do that. That's the Department of Health.
That's right.
Through the state of Alabama. They are the ones that make the regulations on the size of lot that you can have and how, the minimum size of the lots you can have. And it can be... and how, the minimum size of the lots you can have, and it can be one acre. And, so, we don't have any control over that at all, no matter what. Let's talk about water. The pressure, water pressure.
The development will be responsible with providing adequate water pressure, meeting the state guidelines, as well as any fire code requirements, just like any other development in town. That particular area in town is regulated by a booster pump station, and we do acknowledge the changes in pressure. And that's the reason that there is a tank proposed on the north side of town, 25-26 timeframe.
And it's going in the new fire area?
That's right. That's right.
Is going where?
In the new fire.
The new fire training center.
Okay. In the new fire training center, which is up on 280.
Where the old rest stop used to be.
Yeah, where the old rest stop used to be.
We got a water tank coming in then, right?
Yes.
Right.
I'm not prepared to answer the actual elevation question. Our primary, our principal utility engineer would need to answer that question.
Any, let me ask you another question. Any thoughts of sewer going up that way across 280?
Not at this time, no.
Okay.
One thing we always hear about with these new rezonings and things is traffic. And on this one, it's clear to me, you know, whether or not it is COD or rural, it's going to be the same number of units on the land, on the property. And I think the number was 600 vehicles per day on that road. What's the impact of 600 vehicles per day? Is that high, low? What, in y'all's opinion?
Is it really 600? I mean, that was.
So, this falls under our threshold. Our threshold for a single-family detached is typically 70. So, 59 homes, the calculation is about 10 trips per day, per home. So, that's where you get the 590. What is the impact of that? It just depends. There will be peak hour impacts, of course. But, we would have to talk to the county to see if they want something more stringent. Like, the county could require traffic impact study or additional lanes or additional changes at the Stonewall intersection, along with the DOT, because it ties into Auburn 147, which is maintained by all that.
The whole process over time, as you grow, I mean, there's a process that says, okay, now we gotta change the road. It doesn't have the capacity, so now we're gonna do something different with it. I mean, that's all part of this whole build-out process and development and all that sort of thing.
Yes.
And whether or not we approve COD or leave it rural is not going to change the impact of the traffic regardless.
Correct.
Is it in our purview to add a traffic study just for this rezoning, or no?
Yeah, I guess you could make a condition with the rezoner.
But it's not gonna change rules?
It's not gonna change.
Not gonna change.
I mean, it's not gonna change the impact of the traffic regardless, so.
I have a schools question. I know that nobody's here from schools. But, opportunity for another bus stop is a 59-lot subdivision.
So, they kind of have a standard opinion, just kind of around annexations happening within the optimal boundary, largely supportive. When things get outside the optimal boundary or in the far fringes of the optimal boundary like this, they do bristle. And then I think when things are outside the optimal boundary, they're staunchly opposed. So.
But we're within it.
Right. But I think on this one, like I said, like on the outer peripheries of town, that's kind of where, you know, bus routes get weird and like, from an efficiency standpoint, so.
So, just make some noise.
Let me, let me ask another question. I know that's not below 280, it's up there. Sidewalks. There's no sidewalks on Stonewall. There's no sidewalks on Great Alice. There's a sidewalk on Plainsman Hill, on Plainsman Hills Lane.
But that, we don't have the road, so there's not something the city would do for that. The city doesn't have the road, so the city wouldn't put it.
You wouldn't put in a sidewalk on that road?
On Stonewall?
Yeah.
Recommend one there. But that's a county road.
That is.
So, we would have to confirm with the county.
Okay.
Okay.
I think, I mean, I live off of Farmville Road, and to my knowledge, there's not a sidewalk on Farmville Road, is there?
That's a county road, yeah.
Or Miss James Road, and that's further into town than this.
Right. Okay. Those are my questions. Commissioners, do you have any additional questions, motions?
I move to approve.
I second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you all. This goes to city council. We're holding it.
Second meeting in December.
Second meeting, which is the third Tuesday. Okay, go. No, only one no. If you can give us just a second, we'll let them get moved.
I hope they take advantage of talking to this guy. It seems to me there's a lot of flexibility.
I think they can solve those problems.
Yeah.
I didn't see anything that sits over, no, we can't do it, but it's like.
Okay. Thank you so much. Your patience.
Good evening again.
We have another annexation.
Yeah, the annexation request that you're looking at is.
Excuse me, if we can get the attention so I can hear. I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry. The request is for the annexation of approximately 43.8 acres into the city limits. The property is located as 2303 Leroy 10 or the Beehive Road. There is an existing structure on the property that is used for meeting or training purposes. Rest of the property is heavily wooded and is traversed by the Choctaw-Faula Creek in a north-south direction. The property is contiguous to the city of Auburn boundary, to the east, west, north, and south, as you can see. And it is also within the compliant 2030 optimal boundary. The future land use of the map, the future land use designates the property as light industrial. The property has direct access to Leroy 10 or the Beehive Road, that is a public road maintained by the city of Auburn. And based on all these facts, the staff recommends approval of this annexation request.
Okay. Thank you. This annexation request does not require a public hearing. So, commissioners, if you have any questions or a motion?
I'll move to approve case AX 2024-029, weeks annexation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
This is for the same property. We have a rezoning request from rural to industrial zoning district. As you can see, all the surrounding land uses are industrial in nature and are currently vacant. The future land use map, as I said again, it designates the property as light industrial. So, the planning staff recommends rezoning of the property into industrial as it is in accordance with the future land use plan. Thank you.
Okay. But light industrial and industrial is just industrial?
Correct, because it's really just a future land use designation, and all uses in industrial condition.
Okay. Great. This does require a public hearing as a rezoning. So, if anybody would like to come and speak on this agenda item, please come forward now. Nobody's excited to come forward and talk about this, so I'll close the public hearing, and we'll, commissioners?
I'll move to approve case RZ 2024-018, weeks property.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right. So, this request is for conditional use approval for a hotel motel use at 126 Ann Street. It is on the corner of Ann Street and Janelle Avenue, just north of West Magnolia. And the subject property is within the urban neighborhood West zoning district, also known as UNW. And as you can see on this map, it's surrounded on all sides by properties within that same zoning designation. The property is, you can't really see it here, but this, that is in this red rectangle here, and they are proposing a three-story building of approximately 16,000 total square feet with 11 guest rooms, a dining and meeting space, outdoor patio space as well. The project will be a redevelopment of this building that you currently see on the aerial, which is just 18 units that are located on the subject property. So, since this, these proposed units and the meeting space are not rented or anything by individual tenants, or individually to tenants, and are used only for specific occasions that are run by the Mises Institute, like conferences or fellowship programs, staff believes that the nature of that use more closely aligns it with the hotel motel use than any other use that we could find. So, with that being said, staff is recommending approval with conditions. I know that your staff report said comments, but upon publishing of the staff reports, we realized that that was something we wanted to change. And the condition would be that a consolidation of the lots on the property that all house relevant activities towards the institute would need to be consolidated through an administrative plat because hotel uses by our special development standards are not allowed to be on properties that do not have frontage along an arterial or collector street. So, by consolidating, they would have frontage along a collector in Magnolia. And I can answer any questions, and I believe the applicant's here as well.
And parking is on-site, it's on the ground level, and then they go up from?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Thank you. This does require a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak about the Mises Institute addition. But, let me close the public hearing. Close the public hearing. Applicant?
I would like some clarification at the very end. Did I, did I get a, an additional condition to approval?
No, no. So, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, the condition would have been already in the staff report that the lots need to be consolidated to front off of arterial Magnolia. And so, it was a comment, but it need to be a condition because that condition allows you to have the parking of, that's like greatly reduced from the square footage and not being considered an apartment or anything.
I did not find that in a comment anywhere, anyway.
It's advantageous, so I'd recommend you.
I was busy trying to figure out the ramifications. What exactly is the, is the condition?
Okay, so the condition is that the properties must be consolidated. That way, it can front off of Magnolia because the hotel and motel use that we designated this project needs to front off, needs to front off an arterial. And the hotel and motel use is what is driving the parking. And so, parking was like a, is a pretty big sticking point just kind of in the project. And just kind of from what was presented and kind of what could fit on the site, the number of parking required for a hotel motel made the existing site plan possible.
It's a workaround.
I understand the issue, the direction. My concern is that's a, that's a. I cannot speak for the Von Mises Institute. I did not know that was going to be a request. And my concern is that there could be, when you take a, an institute like this, I don't understand funding, I don't understand all the ownership of all the different parcels. My concern is that there could be something that, within their institute, that would prohibit them from consolidating all these, I think there's three parcels, into one. Without conferring with them, I'm concerned that that could be an issue. I would hate to tie this conditional use approval to something that simply cannot be done.
If you could go back to the Prox Map. Yeah, so, it's kind of faint, but there's the, I guess where the arrow is pointing, there's like a L, kind of within like the orange box. It wouldn't have to be all three, it really could just be the larger L. So, it wouldn't have to be all three. I mean, but there would be, need to be an admin plat. That way, you would have frontage off of Magnolia to like.
Future use of the property so that it couldn't be just sold off as.
I'm trying to think through all of this. Y'all know, it doesn't usually happen to me very often. All right. So, if, worst-case scenario, and I do understand the parking concern of trying to accomplish this under the hotel motel use. But worst-case scenario, if this commission was to see fit to approve this with that condition and it became a problem, we would just have to revisit it at a different meeting.
Yeah, and I guess kind of, probably not, it'd probably be, we'd probably have to look at a different use designation because the special development standards wouldn't allow that use designation to exist on Ann Street.
Sure. I understand. All right. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, questions, motions?
Yeah, my only question is, should we vote on that? Is there some questions around the administrative plat that's required? So, I just felt a whole lot where it looked like there was some possible confusion on what that means to the owner, so.
Well, I think that we have to move forward with what is presented before us. And if they make a change, then they need to come back to.
Yeah, yeah. So, I would say they can either, applicant can either request a postponement to a date certain, and we can kind of get that worked out. Or, y'all can move this forward, kind of with the condition or without the condition, up to y'all. But, then kind of from there, like Glenn said, if there were to be, if y'all were to grant the condition and then they were to decide that they could not do it, it wouldn't work because of the special development standards. So, then they'd have to come back before you for a special.
But we have to, we have to have the condition, right?
Yep, I agree. Yes.
Saying we don't have the conditions is just a non-starter.
Yeah.
For this particular use of hotel motel. So, unless they change that.
Yeah, and I guess kind of, to be clear, the ramifications of that, without the hotel motel designation, it would change the parking requirements, and then that changes the project, yada, yada, yada. So, they'd be able to come back, but it, more drawn out.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
I want to make a motion and move to, forward to the city council with a recommendation with condition. CU 2024-039.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Hello. This next request is for a recommendation to city council for conditional use approval for a number of commercial support uses, which include a contractor's storage yard, a mini warehouse, a warehouse, and wholesale distribution. The property is in the industrial zoning district. It's located at 3101 Hive Commerce Parkway. It is within an 11-lot commercial subdivision that was subdivided with the intention to accommodate light industrial uses, such as the ones requested. The future land use, you recommended earlier to change to light industrial, so these uses will align with that future land use designation. The subject property is 1.1 acres, and the site plan shows one building that is 7,750 square feet with six suites. Access from, access to the site will be taken from Hive Commerce Parkway. And the individual uses will be reviewed separately when they are proposed through the DRT process, and staff recommends approval with no conditions or comments.
Okay. Thank you. This conditional use does require a public hearing. I'd like to open that at this time, if you'd like to come forward and speak about this item. Seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have questions for applicant or staff?
Move to approve case CU 2024. Move to approve case CU twenty twenty four zero four two.
Second.
A motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Hello again. This is a request for a conditional use approval for eight-unit multifamily development in a DDH zoning district. The property is located at the end of the Cherokee Road. As you can see in the in in almost all sides, it's surrounded by single-family residences in an NC eight zone. And those properties are on the Kahaba Drive and Tullahoma Drive, which are on the western east of the property. The future land use map in the comp plan designates the future land use for the properties as low-density residential. So this is the current land use where you can see it is DDH, and there is a slight overlap with the DDH on the south. But on all three sides, it's NC eight. The future land use designates the property as low-density residential. That has an average density of four dwelling units per acre. Now, the current property. The current plan indicate the indicates around eight townhomes, which are at a density of two point two dwelling units per acre, which is significantly smaller than the DDH zoning district, as well as it is within the limits of the future land use, which is around four dwelling units per acre. So based on this, the staff does not foresee any additional adverse effects on the adjacent properties by the proposed development and recommends approval of the request.
Thank you. And some of the reasons they may want to do this, particularly for multifamily versus what's, you know, single-family detached or due to easements?
I can.
Yes.
That's correct, yeah. And so as we didn't, we didn't include it, but on on this, pretty much the entire site's just kind of encased with easements, just kind of the big, kind of where they're like, I'd say about half that driveway is all easements. There's a lot of comments, I'm sure people who.
These are our the easements.
Yeah, sure, 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 a lot of the emails we got also kind of kind of referenced flooding. There's a reason for that. A lot of the sites are purely unbuildable, so.
Conditional use, it does require a public hearing, if you would like to come forward. Good evening.
Hi. I am Stephanie Shepherd Praeter. I live at three one four Tullahoma Drive. I'm actually right up in the top there. And so I'm very concerned about this development because I'm actually a geoscientist and I study urban streams. And I could tell you, and I actually am someone who emailed and sent pictures, that this very small stream is very critical to urban drainage. It keeps water moving from Gay Street down towards our properties. Now, currently, our properties, the lower parts, do flood when there's a big rain, but then it goes away quickly. When they build this and they're covering up the stream with a driveway, they're clearing a lot of that land, which is now mostly forested, thick forest with undergrowth, it's all going to go straight into that stream across our properties and then impact the downstream end where the this outlets into a stream that goes under Shelton Mill, where we're already having drainage issues. So, you know, losing the trees in the understory, that's going to just make this so much worse. And, you know, part of why I I wanted to live in that area was because there were trees. I camp in the backyard with my son. When this is built, there will be lights now in our backyard, we won't be able to do that. So, you know, this is not in alignment with what's around it. And it's listed as a conditional use for townhomes, which I think by city policy should be individually owned, but this would be more of an apartment complex, and I feel like that's out of line with what's around it. I'd be okay with infill development, especially if it were actually on Shelton Mill. I'm I'm not opposed to that, but I don't feel like this is appropriate, and I'm I'm concerned about the intention of this site. So this is a dead-end road, and right now, we have tons of kids who stand right at that corner of Cherokee and Shelton Mill. And by adding, what, twenty-four, twenty-seven cars coming out every morning is actually going to be a hazard for the primary bus stop for, what, three of our schools in the city? So these are all the reasons why I oppose it. I oppose it as a resident, I oppose it as a scientist that studies this kind of situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Please don't forget to sign in. Anyone else?
Hello.
Hi.
Long time. My name is Cheryl Thomas. I live at three twenty Tullahoma Drive, which this comes right back to, right about in my property. I don't know what kind of easement they are planning between the back parts of our lots that go across there. I don't know how much space they're going to give us. I don't know if they're going to cut down everything that's back there, which if they're allowed to put this there, they can do whatever they want to do. If it's neighbor neighborhood conservancy, let's conserve the neighborhood. Let's don't put a bunch of rental units, and that's what these are going to be. If he's if he's going to if he's going to do this and you don't, the individuals don't own them, and there's like two point five, what he was talking about, in each of the eight units, that doesn't help any of us. It takes away the trees that we love, takes away the birds, the darn squirrels, you know, as aggravating as they are, but it moves them out. And other little things that the ones of us that have lived there a short time, but the old dude like me has lived there for over forty years. And that that's just not what that general area is is all about. It's it's more neighbors and neighborhoods and enjoying what's going on from our group on Tullahoma right back through to the ones that I can see on my backyard. I can see their houses and all this. And this is going to be in between and blocking off a whole bunch of that neighborhood field. And neighborhood conservancy is there for a reason. And if this is scheduled, if this is zoned something else because of the little touch that fits on the other, I'm not good on the zoning stuff. But if that's all it is, it's pulling it into that DDH or whatever he's talking about, then that's not enough to kill the the other zoning part for a logically thinking old dude like me. So that's y'all, y'all are all smarter than me, and I know that that's the reason you're there. That's the reason I did not send in an application to be a member of this.
You can, there's still time.
I did not send it. So that's the thing. But I do appreciate, and this is my first time ever speaking anything like this. And it's, this means a lot to us. And right now, uh, my wife has Alzheimer's and the extra amount of noise from eight units, each containing two and a half other units in there. The noise from that, from possible renters, will be disturbing to us. And that's a reason, and that's a reason for me standing here making a fool of myself and not being able to control my emotions, but that's a fact. And it makes a difference. Leave us our neighborhood, please, please.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Brad Praeter, three one four Tullahoma Drive. I just heard from my wife. I'll repeat a lot of the things that you'll probably hear tonight. I've got them kind of three major categories. First one I'll touch on is the kind of administrative irregularities that we think took place, the legal notice that we received. The certified letter identified the conditional use as quote eight townhomes. In the subsequent staff report and documents that were in the packet, it was actually indicated as eight-unit multi-unit development or eight-unit multifamily development. And according to the city zoning ordinance, these are separate uses, townhomes and multi-unit developments. So there was no subdivision in the lots in the packet. So we were assuming that the multi-unit development is what is actually being the condition for use. So I'd probably argue that since the public hearing was advertised incorrectly in both the certified letter and the village newspaper, it probably needs to be re-advertised before any action can be taken by the planning commission or the city council. My second kind of topic is going to touch on that the conditional use we think is inconsistent with the neighborhood character. The property is surrounded on all sides except for about fifty feet to the south southwest by NC eight. So, you know, that's neighborhood conservation. And we assume that with with that being kind of the all the adjacent properties, that this would likely should probably fall into that character. And single-family residence is a use by right in the DDH area. So I sympathize with the property owner that it is, development is limited by the kind of geographic and natural features. But unfortunately, that's kind of caveat in tor for what happens when you buy property. Let's see, by inserting this kind of as a DDH into the NC eight area around it, it's almost sort of taking this as a sort of spot zone, almost. Like I said previously, the fifty-foot boundary there to the southwest between it and the the rest of the DDH property that's on Gay Street seems like a seems like a stretch to kind of to say that those are sympathetic zones. And then we're, like my wife said, we're concerned about the compatibility between the twenty seven parking spaces that are proposed for the multi-unit development and all the single-family residential on the street to Cherokee. And I was, I'm concerned that this is at the end of a dead end. And like my wife said, there's concern about all of these cars exiting likely simultaneously in the morning when everybody's trying to leave for work, as well as the buses picking up and dropping kids off. Finally, on this kind of inconsistency with the neighborhood topic, as a multi-unit development, I believe the zoning ordinance requires an open space. The open space indicated on the site plan is neither a focal point or of meaningful quality, I would argue, as required in the zoning ordinance. And then my final topic that I would like to touch on is the environmental impacts. As my wife has suggested, properties already experience periodic flooding with heavy rainfall increasing the impermeable area here would only further exacerbate that for both the adjacent property owners as well as downstream neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in. Anyone else? Good evening.
Hi there. My name is Tep Denmark. I'm the property owner at eight oh four Kahaba Drive, which is probably about five hundred yards from where this proposed development is to go. This subdivision was built, this area was built in nineteen sixty-five. There's at least one man in this room who's lived his entire life on this street. It's quiet, it is residential. This proposal will bring student housing to our neighborhood. It will bring kids wandering home from the bars at two AM. It's one mile from Jordan Hare Stadium. Nothing is to stop investors from purchasing these and for the density to be even higher than what it is zoned for. We'll have kids sharing rooms. We'll have, it will be chaos in that neighborhood. It's not fair to the people who have lived there their entire lives. Let's see. This zoning is specifically meant to be residential. That's not residential. Eight units at the end of a street is not not residential. This is much like the argument of the hundred and seventy-eight acre tract. We're going from low density to high density. And it's just, it's not what we need in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Heidi Finnegan. I live at eight oh two Kahaba, which is right in that corner, about that hundred-degree angle right there, and my house faces that corner. And just a couple of things that I heard from other people say, the flooding, it doesn't necessarily go away that quickly. Through my backyard is an easement that runs underneath Kahaba into that other corner lot right there by the proposed build-in. And that was my neighbor, Rhiannon, and she lived there for years. And I can't even tell you how many times Rota Ruter had been out there, how many times she'd have plumbers out there, how many times we called the city to come and dig out that easement. Excuse me, it kept flooding. Another thing I want to point out, along with the traffic, the kids all meet there at the end of Cherokee, that is their bus stop. There's a lot of kids that walk there every morning, every afternoon. And there's a stop sign right there at the end of Kahaba where people will turn left. That is, my my living room windows look straight out there. I can tell you there's over a hundred cars a day that don't even bother to stop there. So adding more traffic coming from that way, that will be rentals, transients, you know, people that just don't really care about their surrounding area. I just, I fear for my neighbors' kids. The people that live across the street from me have four children under the age of eight. Everybody there has dogs, they have cats. You know, there's elderly people that walk their dogs at all time of day. People will fly around that corner, and you can't see past my Confederate rose bushes there, but they don't care. And they're going forty and fifty in a twenty-five. So those are just things that I would like for y'all to consider to those of us that live there in our way of life. Thanks.
Hi, Martin Moore, three one eight Tullahoma Drive. So one of those middle parking lot backs right up to my backyard. I don't have too much to add to what my my neighbors have said. I just want to reiterate, I I agree with them that I feel like this this doesn't meet the character of our neighborhood. As one of my neighbors said, I do sympathize with the with the property owner where, you know, there's not a lot of buildable land there. But if you look where he proposes and if you look at our lot sizes, I do believe there is enough room for more than one single-family residential house similar to our lots to go in there. So I think that this doesn't meet with just the neighborhood in general. It is, as everyone said, it's a nice, quiet neighborhood, and it's surrounded by all single-family houses. And I think that's a, that it would be a detriment to our community, to our property, and also to the to the neighborhood and the field. So that's all I'll have to say.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Beal, and I'm at eight oh two Tullahoma Drive, which is not adjacent to any of this. It's on the other side of Tullahoma, backing up to the other creek that defines Tullahoma as as an area. And I've lived there for thirty-five years. I've seen all the development that goes on on that side. And down Letahatchee, I'm on the corner of Letahatchee and Tullahoma. And I saw, I've seen when a retaining pond was put in because our creek would flood. I've seen, I have a drainage easement down the side of my road, and I've seen the erosion that has happened from that from that retaining pond and down my creek and down in my property. I've lost property for erosion because of all the of the thing. They're building something, I don't know how they're going to deal with the possibilities of erosion and the cement that they're going to have to put on to to get into that property. And that's a concern to me, as well as the flooding issue. They have much more problems with flooding. They don't have an eas ret- retaining pond in that area that I know of. And so this is just putting more impermeable surfaces to drain into that creek which will then drain down. So that's my, one of my concerns. The other concern is people are talking about the neighborhood. They're talking about the number of kids that get down at the end of that street. Shelton is is a busy street. And Cherokee is where the city has put a flashing walking light so that people can safely cross that street. And that's kids as they come to bus stops, that's adults, that's elderly, that's, you know, people with their pets, people with their kids and their bikes, all cross at that intersection to get to the. that intersection to get to the other side. And you're not just talking about the neighborhood of Cherokee uh, in, in that little circle. People walk that entire way. They walk down Cherokee and down to Bibb and back around and up the, you know, to Bodie, and then they go around Tullahoma and they come back around and then they come over there to Cherokee and that area. And that is kind of a walking trail for the area. So I wanted to add in there that there are all those people walking that area. You're talking about putting in that many more vehicles in that small space. Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak?
I'm John Cochran, and I live at uh, eight, seven eight Cherokee, which is right up on the edge of this property. And uh, I sent some emails, y'all may have seen a picture of my yard with that flooding. And that's uh, not a special rain, that's just a, a quick, any quick thunderstorm will get there. But let me backtrack a minute because I got a statement from somebody that couldn't sta- excuse me, couldn't stay. Her name is uh, Deborah, Deborah Stabler. They live at three twenty-six. They oppose the building of this. Uh, we're all single-family dwelling neighborhood. Such units and that are not keeping with the characteristic of the established neighborhood. Uh, she would like to request a delay so that she could be here and bring y'all up on some past history from back in oh one when they talked about putting a road in and putting us contact with higher density elements and stuff. And they talked about uh, bringing Embry Lane out Cherokee. They did, and they went lead a hatchet, but that's a whole nother story. Uh, so there's a lot of history there. This council has heard like this back and forth that went on all night with these other things about making concessions and stuff. That's happened with this property several times. And, and twenty-odd years ago when it happened, they said, you know, that's not going to be built on, we can't build on that, lolly, lolly, lolly. Neither here nor there now, I know, but there is history. And if the councils has done something before, it seemed like we would want to see that again. I requested information on how to get old minutes of meetings and stuff so I can maybe look back and see what was discussed, what wasn't discussed, because I wasn't there. Ms. Stabler was, um, you know, I just won't put that in your, that we may need to just postpone this till we can get a full, full assessment. And everybody, like everybody's added, I can't say anything else. It floods, we need to fix that, they're going to make it worse, and we should table it at least until we look at that. I really don't know what else to tell you. It's going to lower our values. How could, how could your staff say that there's not going to be an adverse effect to putting this in the middle of NC eight neighborhood? I, I mean, and if you read, I don't know, I read the uh, description of DDH, and it says that the primary use is residential.
You're talking to the?
Oh, is, is residential, right? Uh, conventional residential. And then it, it defines that later in the ordinance as being single-family dwellings. Okay? This conditional use is just that. It's a special assumption we sh- we have to make to give them permission to do this. It shouldn't be, as the staff says, just because it meets this and this, it's okay. The primary use is individual family houses. And if, you know, they want to throw some lots in there, maybe, but it, you know, it's a floodplain and they might have issues. But they own it now and they got sold it, so like, like they say, buyer beware. But I do hope y'all either postpone this or ignore the staff request uh, until we at least address the flooding, make sure this won't aggravate it um, or anything else. You know, it's, there's a lot of history there that I think needs to be looked at and, and thought, more thought process put into it than just because it meets the legality and the definitions and the rules that it's okay. I think my five minutes are about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll be real quick. Um, first of all, thank you guys. I've never been to zoning, had no idea what all y'all had to deal with. So thank you. And even the people who support.
Welcome.
Yeah, so anyway, I'm Melanie Saunders. I live at three twenty-two Tullahoma Sherwood is my neighbor. But this, um, what my unders- what I don't understand is why you would put townhouses where you have to go through a neighborhood to get to the townhouses. I do know this part, this is um, student housing or something, but it comes out to Gay Street. You don't go through a neighborhood to get through it. So I'm not really sure, are there townhouses here that you go through a neighborhood to get to them? I don't know. Is there? Yeah, well, it's, it's a pretty dangerous situation here because of the students. And I love students, I think they're great, but they come with a lot of entertainment. Um, and also game day, game day, it's crazy and no parking and all of that will be crazy too. But anyway, I'm on the backside of it, but it's still just something to consider with. Um, I mean, I know you guys do what you do, but I'm just saying, we're all about, you can do houses maybe, but townhouses just, ah, it's such a, like I said, it's such a sweet little neighborhood. All but the big major shell mills running a lot now, so anyway, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Pamela Ken. I live at eight oh eight Kahaba Drive. I've lived there for twenty-eight years. Um, everyone has said what I have to say, but I'd like to reiterate mainly the problem with our children. I have a small dog. I'm way past little children, but I walk a lot. And I have a dog that walks with me. I can't tell you the number of times that I have had to flag down people flying through Kahaba, UPS drivers, some postal workers, not as much as FedEx, and students coming through. Getting their two entrances to Shelton Road from where I live, one on the Cobb Inn and one on the Cherokee. It's hard to get in and out of our little circle just with horrible traffic on Shelton Road. So that's another problem. And the um, bus stop on the corner of the children, that's dangerous, even with the flashing lights. I have a huge concern about the traffic from these townhomes down Cherokee, just that one little stretch of road. And the building of the townhomes will completely destroy that road with all the heavy machinery and stuff like that that will go in, and then add the floodplain to it. So thank you very much.
Please sign in.
My name's Eric Scholseth, and I live at three one six Tullahoma. And uh, really reiterate all the things that have been said before. Definitely my backyard will flood more. Um, one of the reasons we moved to that house was because I have a special needs child, he's autistic, and that it creates a sound barrier and, um, so the loud noises really frustrate him. So bringing that in will definitely disrupt that. So we, we would be right up against the, the development of those houses. Um, and yeah, it just kind of, kind of ruins the feel of the neighborhood a bit, actually quite a bit. So that's uh, that's really all I had to say. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Gerald Stevens. I live at eight twenty-eight Kahaba Drive. And uh, I'm a retired public safety officer of this city. When I moved into this community in two thousand and two, children was everywhere. Kids was everywhere. But even back then, people were speeding, you know, I called them, my comrades to come and assist us. They're coming, busy as the city is and considering all that's going on, game days and all that, they did the best they could. But uh, Tullahoma, I'm, I'm aware of that community over there. I'm most definitely aware of the people on Kahaba. You know, when I first moved there, there was maybe five or six demobulated homes. Families moved in with their kids. You know, it was just a real tight community. We respected one another, we loved one another, and we were law-abiding citizens. And now it seems like there's a thing going on in the city with, with change. It brings on other things as well. It's overwhelming. I'm dealing with a situation right now on Maddox Street where my parents lived. It, it literally don't exist anymore. They're surrounded by new development, they over there doing it right now. I consider it over and done with because it is what it is when a person bought property and it meets the legalities of it all, they do it, they, they do as they please. But now it seems like it's coming over the tree line. It's coming to Kahaba Drive, Tullahoma, Cherokee, you know? It's just disappearing. Something has to give. Whatever it was designed for, we need to try to stick to that. Like I said, I'm, I've, I've invested in the community. I own two homes in the community. That's how much I like it over there. It's quiet, it's, it's, it's tight, the people respect each other, we love each other. I look out for as many as I can. I've raised my kids there. You know, I'm happy, I'm good. But we, we gotta, we gotta do something to get control over the history and the tradition in these communities that's been here way before our time, way before our time. So I'm not, I'm, I'm not in favor of this. I hope y'all really listen to everybody who's spoken from Tullahoma, who's spoken from Kahaba, Cherokee and all that, because we've been there. You know, we see the speeding cars. We see the school buses coming through, UPS, FedEx and DoorDashers and everybody else. But I've also seen people moving in the community where it's only supposed to be two people living there and it's four. And, and three people move in and it's five. And they're just passing through. But every once in a while, I'll walk outside and I have a conversation with these people and let them know who actually lives in this community and what we stand for. So again, I just wanted to let it be known, I wasn't going to say anything, but I just couldn't sit here and not say something. And I hope y'all will, uh, I hope y'all bear everything that was said in reference to, keep that in mind. Thank you.
Great service. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. The applicant is here. Questions for either?
I do have a few things to say. I'd be happy to answer any questions prior to that, though, if there are any specific.
So is this, are these townhomes or is this a multi-unit rental facility?
So the original intent was to provide fee simple townhomes. Um, the thought process is now, um, due to the townhome requirements and the need to subdivide off of private streets, was to um, get, approve this hopefully as a multiple unit development and potentially condo them because of the hardships of trying to, that we've all dealt with, trying to subdivide off of, off of these types of areas. I believe we're on the way to correcting some of that in the, in the zoning ordinance. Um, I, I would like to give a little history of this property. Oddly enough, um, I have, I have prior knowledge of this property, fairly, fairly extensive prior knowledge this, of this property. I did my senior design project on this property, um, on the, on the creek that, uh, that would be crossed by this project. Did a, did a flood study, did, um, did a good bit of work in this area. But subsequent to that, there was a development that came through just south of here, uh, it's Embry Lane, believe it came through, I'm gonna, I'm reaching way back, maybe oh three? Oh three? All right. Um, well, then Amber and I might be the only people that, and Katie, that remember much about it. But um, the uh, Embry Lane was originally proposed to connect into Cherokee and Kahaba. And if I'm not mistaken, the uh, the, the local residents were opposed to that, and they did not want that connectivity for, to these new homes that were going to be built um, to the south. And the developer at the time, truthfully, didn't have much of an issue with that because it kept him from having to spend the dollars to cross this creek. And that's how this parcel arose. Um, it's kind of left there and uh, ended it up in some other hands now. And the, the owner of this property now has been looking for a way to, to handle this. And he's looked at it from a number of different scenarios. Uh, his initial thought was to do some fee simple, single-family residential homes. Um, I believe we had a layout that had like seven of them. Um, one thing, the, the creek crossing is both a, a physical and, you know, not germane to this conversation, but it's a financial hardship. But we, no matter how you develop this property, your, you know, your, your unit count's going to be very similar. What, what he was proposing to do is instead of coming in and crossing this and dropping a cul-de-sac essentially as soon as you cross the creek and then essentially clearcutting everything, because that's what you'd have to do to, to put single-family residential in there because of the land mass and the footprint that you'd need to do it. His, his attempt was to do this, what you have is the expectation of all three-bedroom units. Um, he's currently looking at, that's, that's worst-case scenario from a bedroom count. He's currently looking at options to reduce some of these units to two-bedroom units. So the only reason that matters is the parking, because the parking required is directly tied to the number of bedrooms provided. So this is um, a conditional use request for all three-bedroom units, and it meets that requirement. The, the hope would be that they, they figure out a, some, some other floor plans to provide some two-bedroom units and we can start shrinking that because it is in his best interest to do so. The uh, his, his goal is not to come in and rent to students. First of all, the family definition applies in DDH. Um, it's a maximum of three-bedroom. This is not proposed to be a student-living uh, community. This is proposed for young families and probably more, more predominantly young professionals, things like that. But I, I say all that just to give some history as to the, the residents' input as to how this parcel got, got created in the first place. Because I, I do believe that that's a, that's an important discussion to have here. So when you um, when you, when you take a look at all of that, there are, there are ways to, to mitigate impacts. If you look, we uh, we're at the very beginning. Um, I would like to pull that development further down the hill, hopefully shrink the parking. Um, I don't know that for certain, waiting on some info on that. But what I do know is that this layout gives the ability to leave some buffer, because at the end of the day, that's what's going to keep this neighborhood separate from the ones around it. And specifically on the south and to the, I don't even know what to call that, back in the corner, there's no reason to, to remove those, the, the trees that are there right now, because you're, you're never going to get back into that area with a development. And it would, in this scenario, wouldn't make any sense for the developer to do so because it brings him no value to go farther and farther up that hill and remove all that vegetation. So the plan here is So the plan here is to minimize impact. And in my opinion, this is an actually, um, from an environmental clearing standpoint, this is a less impactful development than a single-family neighborhood would be. Because if it becomes single-family, it, it's gonna get clear cut. I mean, without question, it's the only way you can do it. Simply because of the geometry of the property. So, um, all that being said, I, I did hear a significant amount of concern about traffic. I, I don't, I don't know that however you develop this seven, eight, twelve units is not gonna be a significant traffic modification to this area. It's just, it's just not enough, um, vehicles per day to, to make significant changes.
I'm sorry, I have a question. So you said that you did have a single-family detached layout that was about seven units?
Yeah, six or seven, something like that. But like I said, you would essentially, you would be pushing, to be able to get those number of units, you would be pushing the homes as far northwest, parallel to the creek as you could possibly get them to be able to get the rest of them around. So that means that everything that's not within that creek buffer, I mean, there, there wouldn't be anything left.
Let me, let me, um, ask you something, well, more than one thing. You said that at first, you had thought about this being fee simple.
Yes, ma'am.
And what was the reason why it's not fee simple?
Uh, the, the developer really doesn't feel strongly about it in, in either direction. It was really more of a, truthfully, it was the, the step required to now get the, to still currently get the waiver to, um, subdivide off, off of a private street.
Oh, oh, okay.
As a, I'd like to interject, uh, this came up on an earlier meeting. Properties, property owners are now entitled to, uh, subdividing off of private streets if they're not on single-family, if it's not single-family housing, if there's no connectivity posed. I mean, there's, there's several standards. That was one of the changes in the subdivision regs that we went over. Just kind of from the perusing this, this would qualify, so I wanna...
Next question was, but you, then you went on and you said, but we're thinking about maybe putting them into condos? But right now, it's just a mud.
Well, if, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Justice, if they were to condo this out of a multiple-unit development, that's, that's what that would be.
Yeah, and so, and so I guess kinda the changes on fee simple versus MUDs, um, just kinda on a technical standpoint. Setbacks get different, that's, like, that's a space thing.
Yeah, but we have had developments that come back and wanted to change from condo to townhouse.
Right, exactly.
Condos are so expensive to ensure.
Correct.
Let me ask another question. Because of the way this is laid out, um, there's not gonna be garbage cans, are there? There're gonna be a dumpster.
Yes, ma'am.
Where's the dumpster going?
It's shown in the southwest corner of the parking lot.
There it is, right there.
I can barely read that. It's so little, the print's so little. Okay, I see that dumpster. So, um, you're gonna have a big dumpster emptying truck coming in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I would, I would submit with that thought process that in, in either direction, you're gonna have a trash truck.
I know, I know.
And there's one that runs through these streets right now to pick up trash, too.
So could, if it was just a bunch of single-family units, um, we'd still have a private drive there?
No, because single-family housing is cannot be, cannot be subdivided off of a private street.
So it would be a public street?
So it'd be a public street.
So you would just extend Cherokee?
Yes, ma'am.
Into a cul-de-sac.
Well, I think this, I mean, you know, what I hear from the neighbors is that they, they want the single-family dwellings. And, you know, the trees, yeah, there are trees there, but, but, you know, that's what I hear at least. Am I, am I, am I reading between the lines?
No, I think that's, that's correct. I mean, pretty much that was like one of the main tenets of what we got from the slew of emails that we received. I mean, it was probably over a dozen. I think y'all, y'all received them as well. I mean, trees are one of their main concerns. I, I think too...
Or houses.
I'd say trees, maintaining the trees, I guess also kinda, kinda the, the, what the end product was. But, but I think kinda to the point, I think kinda Arundham harped on it as well. At eight dwelling units and across, you know, three-point-six acres, it's only two-point-two. NCA is double that by right. DDH, if someone wanted to build single-family housing, they could bypass everybody, figure out how to build on floodplain or whatever. If they wanted to do it and put twenty homes back there and they'd be, there would not be a single tree left. So, that's...
And we wouldn't be here tonight and talk about it.
No, by right, by right.
Well, I tell you, I'm, I'm gonna, it's gonna shock some to hear me say this, but, you know, I'm usually good with a lot of these conditional uses and people coming along and, and doing all good stuff, but this one doesn't feel right.
Yeah.
It just does not feel right. I think two houses back here looks right, you know? And so it's one of these things that I, I hear all the, the arguments and all the, here's how we're gonna make it work, but, and I hear how this place got put in there, all, all good, all good stories, but it just, now, it's, it's just not right. And so I can't support this at all.
Can, can we go?
If they're not right, what, what do you?
I, I, it's the, um, single-family home with, you know, this, this multiple-unit thing right in the middle. And it's just the character and, you know, when we try to zone things, we, we try to go from, you know, low-density to high-density and this is just throwing something in the middle of low-density and I, I just...
It's only DDH, but twenty there.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, I understand it too, and I agree with Phil. Because I'm looking at this and it's like, you've got this DDH right out in the middle, surrounded by NCA. I know there's a DDH down at the corner.
It's not new.
No, it's been there.
I know it's not new.
And we're not, we're not hearing a zoning here. We're not hearing a zoning.
I, I know that. How did it get?
So, so, yeah, so this is the original zoning. Yeah, so this has not rezoned anything.
I, I, I know that.
So, 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 yeah, so whenever zoning was implemented and embracing the city, this is the original zoning. It's not been rezoned once.
I realize that it's just...
It's one of those unique situations, right?
The property below it, the property below it, the NCA, was also DDH. And that was rezoned to NCA when Embry Lane was...
Okay, right, okay. So, so, so I took a look at the area and I, I get where the...
Okay, hey, hey, all right. So, so, let's, let's, uh, please, please focus.
Okay, so, so I, I get where the, uh, neighbors are coming from on that and, you know, from their objections in the area. My question is, you mentioned that, um, your intent was not to let students, um, rent back there? Is that what you said or?
That is not the developer's intent that cannot be controlled, obviously.
That can't be controlled, okay.
There are certain things that keep that from being controlled. What you can enforce is the family definition within the area.
No more than two unrelated, is DDH and NCA.
Okay, gotcha.
It remains that.
All right, I'm clear.
One, one point of clarification. One, one person brought up the fact that the notification came out as a, as a townhome and now it's switched to a mud. Do we have some legal requirements here to, to?
That is, that, that is actually a great point. So, I will say, so what is, before everybody tonight is actually not a plat. That is a site plan. And so, at the, at this point, I mean, you wouldn't know if it was gonna subdivide or anything. And like Blake referenced, when we had the pre-op meeting, this was going to be, um, townhomes. I said, Blake and I shared that this is gonna be converted to an MUD. That was just a conversation just internally that we had, that from the looks of it, that it would be an MUD. But at this point in time, kinda in the phase in development of townhomes and MUD, they virtually look the same on a site plan. Like I said, there, there would be no distinction until it was a townhome and a plat. And so, when the plat was submitted, when the plat would be submitted, then you would see the distinction. But right now, at this time, the site plan would showcase them as the same because there are no lot lines on a site plan.
So we'll have a plat coming, a preliminary?
Yeah, and I said, so when we talked about it in the pre-op meeting, it was they were gonna pursue the conditional use and then after they got approval for the conditional use, then they would eventually come back with a plat. And so that is still kinda, that's still in line and with the trajectory that we're currently following.
Technically, we wouldn't have even had to see what is provided tonight.
Nope.
To know what was going there.
What, when, when they put in the private drive, let's talk about water issues because that is a main concern of a lot of people that, that, you know, and, and I'm sympathetic to homeowners and that already exists there, but you gotta realize that this is an interior lot in an urban development. And so somebody's gonna develop this and they have a right to. So my question to you is, how are you gonna make sure that these, these flooding issues are mitigated by, you know, what are you gonna do with that road? You've studied this as a senior project.
I'm gonna revise my study twenty, thirty years later to begin with.
I wanna know what your plans are.
So...
They're standard practice, right?
It, it is.
There are requirements that are...
So, actually, twenty-one years ago, I did my, I did my senior design on this. And I, I imagine it's, there is some flooding and it's probably significantly, the cause of that flooding is the same today that it was then. And it was predominantly overgrowth and obstructions within the creek channel. So, th- this area is not within the flood zone. There is some, there are some low-lying areas. What we would have to do is come in and, um, actually do a hydrology study, design the, the type of crossing, be it, uh, round pipe, culvert, bridge, probably not gonna be necessary for that. I imagine these will be large round pipes, uh, to make this crossing. And that, that is, that's what's required. When that is required is, is the key, you know, question. That is required once a, um, and I, I know I'm saying this as much for the, for the residents behind me as the commission because the commission knows this, but what, that, the timing of that is that you, you cannot move forward with the, with the type of design and data collection that's necessary to answer those questions fully until you know that the project can be constructed.
Absolutely.
But at, we would have to do a full hydrology study and the engineering department would review that and ensure that the crossing that's designed is sufficient to handle the water flow in the area.
And that wouldn't matter based on this type of development or our single?
Look, if you were to go to city streets, would that increase the cost of this development quite substantially for you?
Probably not a whole lot.
I was gonna say, it probably doesn't matter to you whether it's a private drive or not.
The, the cost of this development is that creek crossing. City street, you know, you, you, you've got to provide twenty-four feet of asphalt and curb and gutter. When you put this private drive in there, we're gonna provide probably twenty-two feet of asphalt and curb and gutter. I mean, it's, it's a small amount of, you know, financial difference.
Thank you.
Questions? Motion?
Make a motion to approve, um, conditional use case CU twenty-twenty-four dash oh forty-one.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Non-Net Reese?
Yes.
Dana Camp?
No.
Phil Chancellor?
No.
David Wisdom?
Yes.
Joseph A. Strupp?
No.
Jennifer Stevens?
Yes.
Oscar Mosley?
Yes.
Four-two-three.
Four-three. Last agenda item of the evening is a waiver request. If you wanna wait just a second.
And then there was one.
Okay. Waiver request, Uptown One.
Yes, this is a, an appeal to the denial of an engineering, design and construction manual waiver request related to right turn and left turn deceleration lanes. The development is located at three-fifty Bragg Avenue, um, and it is known as Uptown One. And both waiver requests were considered and subsequently denied, and the applicant is seeking an appeal.
And this is one, right and left are on one?
We did them as...
No, I don't...
No, 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 no. So, 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 yeah, so this is two turn lanes and then you guys have the option to split the question and decide on them individually.
It just says left turn decel.
Did you send them to Steph?
Yes, 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 yes. So it's a left turn and a...
And a right turn. I don't know.
Yeah, right now they're combined, so...
But that, that's not what it says right here.
I mean, we can make, we can make a motion.
Okay. Is there any more history you can provide on this?
The only little bit of history I would provide is that we considered this case, um, a few months ago, worked with the engineer to work through a streetscape plan showing the widening required on Bragg Avenue sidewalk location, streetscape. And we did have, we do have a solution that works to accommodate the lanes that will go with their development. So, but they wanted an appeal.
It doesn't, it, it wouldn't have, that, that solution wouldn't have them having to buy additional property or anything else like that? Or it's just takes a little bit of their, a little bit of their property, right?
Correct.
And the widening just happens on, in front of their property, not the whole length of Bragg Avenue.
I think they were showing a symmetrical widening or not quite symmetrical.
Thank you.
There you go.
Yeah, so they were showing a little bit of widening on...
On Bragg, yes.
On the south side of Bragg. And some to the north side.
And it's a corner, right, it's Bragg and...
White Street is one lot over, to the west, there is a lot, and then there's White Street.
Okay. Uh, waiver request does not require a public hearing. Applicant is here. Yes, please come and talk to us.
I've never gotten to use this before, so I'm a little nervous.
It's just a microphone.
Well, I was gonna say, and I'm glad this doesn't have a public hearing because I'm starving and struggling. If I fade, y'all bear with me, okay?
Well, you're standing between us and our dinner.
I will do my best to be concise. Real quick, uh, I've got some points I wanna run through. We can, and we can answer any questions, but if you don't mind, I've got a couple of points I wanna hit. Stone Ray is also here on behalf of the development. He's got a couple of points that he wanted to go through in this slideshow that y'all see. So, I think they're gonna be relevant to the discussion. And then, um, we can kinda pick up any questions or if y'all feel free to stop me if we gotta talk through any of that. But I'll try to be as concise as possible. Okay. The, the last slide was, um, that Allison mentioned was a sketch we did whenever this first came up. When we had originally proposed the waiver, this would be the, this, this represents the full extent of what the, you know, left and right turn lane decel requirements would be for the thirty-five mile-per-hour speed limit. As a part of, and just to give you guys some context, and on this, I kinda highlighted some, some issues that were gonna, um, be very difficult to overcome, if not impossible, with some of the, um, issues of impacts adjacent properties on this one. With the most recent, ooh, I went too far, sorry. With the most recent, uh, waiver denial, engineering has given us some options to limit the impacts to, you know, the adjacent rightaway, the property that we're developing on, all that good stuff of dropping the speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour. And at one point, also narrowing the lanes to eleven-foot wide lanes, the twelve-foot wide lanes is the standard. So, what this sketch represents would be what it looks like at the, excuse me, from a dimensional standpoint of the twenty-five mile-per-hour, um, design speed and the eleven-foot wide lanes. So, you can see we've got a right turn lane and a left turn lane shown in there. Couple of things I wanted to talk about relative to this particular image that you guys can see. We're, we still have concerns even from this perspective with a couple of things. Impacts to the adjacent properties, both on, particularly to the east of this property that we're developing, excuse me, and to the south at three-nineteen Bragg. So, for context, in the bottom left of the screen there, that's the central entrance of the three curb cuts to three-nineteen Bragg. So, that entire driveway would have to get reworked with this, this left turn lane addition, including some, um, sidewalk fixes on either side just to accommodate the widening in the middle. Some potential impacts to some utility infrastructure over there, particularly in the bottom left, there's a, a light pole there that we'd have to do something with. I'm not sure of who owns the light pole, it may be... It may be the power companies, it may be private, I'm, I'm not sure at this stage. The biggest things I wanted to point out, from a adjacent property concern, if you look at the, the original, which would go, be a by-the-book, based on the design speed, widening to accommodate these turn lanes, there would be curb clipping the adjacent eastern property. So I would say the twenty-five mile per hour drop is a definite improvement. However, I don't see a way to avoid having some sort of construction easement or something that would have to be required to install this at this, at these dimensions with even pulling the curb back just inside of the right away. As you can see here, and y'all are all familiar, this is a very familiar stretch of Bragg Avenue. But right here where the, where the property is, the grade right off the back of the curb is, is extreme. And it continues onto the eastern property that's adjacent to us. So there would, we're, either a wall would have to be installed, which again is gonna have some, some level of cut into the adjacent property just for layback. And, or we would have to grade back on the adjacent property. Couple of issues with that. And another member of the development, the development team here could speak to this a little bit better than I could. But I think there are some very significant title issues to where I'm not sure, I don't know how we could chase down getting a construction easement from the adjacent property owner. So that's, that's one concern. And again, just the, the grading onto the adjacent parcel. Relative to that conversation, there is a trend, an Alabama co- power company transmission line, you can see it here in the pictures, these old wood poles. It's not attractive, you know, we can all agree on that. But you'll notice how close they are to the back of curb. And they run from the intersection at Donahue, all the way back up Bragg. From a impact to adjacent property standpoint, obviously, if, if we were to widen this, which again is not, you know, we, we widen roads in the city all the time where we have to move power poles, not a big deal. But from this perspective, on this property's frontage, we're gonna impact two poles, one with the road widening, one with the streetscape in particular. And there's really nowhere to move them other to, other than shifting them outboard, if that's even allowed by the power company, or they would have to go underground. The underground route would be extremely significant undertaking because it is a transmission line, it's not the general distribution. We've gotten cost estimates on stuff like that from the power company, which again would not necessarily be charged with private developer since it would be to expand city infrastructure. But the timing of this is, depending on the scope of that removal, if we put it underground, whatever we do with the transmission lines, depending on how far that extends up the street, it could be one to two-year timeframe, which would obviously, you know, adversely affect the, the development in a pretty extreme way. As far as impacts to the developable property that we're on right now, I don't, I don't know if you guys remember when this was originally brought to planning commission. This is a thirty-town, a fee simple, thirty-town home lot subdivision. It is on three point oh six acres. So the maximum allowable density within this zoning district is ten units an acre, we're just under that. But we are at the upper limits of that. And there's also a half-acre commercial out parcel on the frontage of the property.
Private, right? Subdivided off private?
Uh, yes, everything subdivided off private street. This one's unique because it's all done with access easements. So there's, there's, there's a lot of issues there, but from a spatial perspective, with the, the density of the property, you'll notice, I've got a green hatch here. With the proposed streetscape along Bragg, which has recently changed, we learned about that during the DRT process here recently. At one point, they were supposed to propose to be a seven-foot wide green space off the back curb, an eight-foot wide sidewalk with street trees located within the green space. Now, it's my understanding that it's changing to go to a ten-foot wide sidewalk off the back of curb with a street tree, similar to what you're gonna see downtown. With that particular widening of the sidewalk, we're not gonna be able to construct those three units that are gonna front Bragg Avenue right there. And there's really no space to push them further into the property for a number of different reasons. But one, just because of the, the issues with aerial fire access, the, the size of the buildings, in order to get the, you know, the vision of what the developer wants. We're also impacted on the north side of this property, which was brought up during the original planning commission submission with an existing city stormwater easement, which we're, we're not necessarily opposed to because they're letting us use it to expand and uses our stormwater retention, which is a great thing. What I'm trying to point out is, this will negatively impact the number of units that are gonna be available to be constructed on the site, which at the cost of the property within the, you know, within the outer loop, especially this close to Urban Core, potentially doesn't make the project viable at that point. I thought you, I thought you were gonna say something.
No, no, I'm, I'm just like, I, I'm just, just interested in that change. And, and, and you know, you already, you already brought this project forward, right?
Yes, sir.
And so all this is approved except for just the turn lanes.
Well, we're in the middle of the DRT process right now. We're going through initial comments, so I think we'll have that meeting on Thursday. And whatever we decide in here tonight, it's really gonna impact what I got on the drawings for that. But, yeah, but the, the, the turn lane was not a part of the original development, that's why it was a waiver through the engineering services.
And so.
Streetscape, though, you mentioned, I'm sorry, the streetscape you mentioned, is that part of while you're doing development, that the city was gonna do that or not?
Well, the streetscape's gonna be on the developer to, to construct across our frontage. And the, the, one of the other points I wanted to bring up, particularly about the streetscape since we're talking about that, that, that type of streetscape, you know, in our opinion, I'll let Stone talk about this, he's, he's a little more knowledgeable about stuff like that. But generally, that type of streetscape is a very urbanized pedestrian, you know, heavy type of section. It's at the back of curb, there are street trees with wells, there is no strip of green space at that point. And so it, we're, I mean, and I'm not saying we're getting mixed signals, but it seems like there's the, you know, there's the engineering piece of this, which is based on the classification of the road, decel lanes are gonna be required. But the planning piece of it also seems that, tha- tha- in our head, they don't really mesh together. So.
Is this new streetscape only gonna be right here on this three fifty Bragg?
My, my understanding is it's gonna be the, this whole stretch of Bragg, but y'all can, okay.
That's correct. We, we, well, you keep talking, I'll talk later.
I'm getting tired of talking, but, uh. So yeah, I, I think this, that's where this is going, which I think is great. I guess our, our, one of our primary concerns is from a pedestrian perspective, particularly with the right turn lane. It would be yield-controlled, but generally the purpose of turn lanes, deceleration lanes are to keep the flow of traffic moving. It will kinda by nature allow for a little bit quicker turn and maneuver to the right, at the right turn into the development, where we're gonna have the streetscape crossing. I'm not, I'm not saying that, that, you know, there's anything that's gonna happen. But I'm saying that it, it seems that, that's, that may not be the best move from a pedestrian standpoint. That's, that's something we've been considering on our end. Also, the streetscape would also impact another utility pole that is gonna be extremely difficult to move, now that it's gonna be moved to the back of the curb.
So the city is planning on mo- really taking Bragg down from thirty-five to twenty-five, right?
Now, one of the things I considered in evaluating the waiver request was as he's approaching a stop condition, to use a lesser speed limit. We, I did the same thing across at Mathen's parking lot. It was right at the intersection, so I was comfortable with a reduced speed limit to be used for the design of the turn lanes. So very similar situation here. White Street is just adjac- I say just adjacent, one lot over to the west, and then you're at North Donahue Drive. So cars are not, should not be going thirty-five, it's probably more appropriate to do twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, slower would be better, especially because it does feel like this is in a redevelopment district. It's gonna be, it seems like it wants to be more urbanized, particularly with this streetscape plan that we're talking about.
So the left-hand turn lane is something you can accommodate, you think?
I would, I mean, that's gonna be a lot easier than the right turn lane, yes, sir.
Okay.
And the barrier on the right turn lane is the telephone pole plus the.
Telephone pole and just the, we're not gonna be able to build those three lots, is, which is a, a big issue. That's right. I've also been asked to bring up, you know, and this is, I know it's a case-by-case basis, but we don't have any turn lanes across the street at a much more dense residential development, it's worth pointing out. And it does, it does feel like it's some, I mean, if, again, if this is what y'all decide we need to do, then that's, that's what it is. But it does feel like this would potentially set some precedent, then if, and if that's what the city wants, that as Bragg redevelops, I imagine it'll have a similar section at each one of these. You know, depending on whatever the future, the future streetscape and road section plan is gonna look like. I can come back up and answer any questions, but I wanna let Stone talk about some stuff if y'all don't. Travis is gonna talk to you.
I'm Travis Wisdom, this is, uh, I'm the developer of the project or one of them. I just wanna make it clear, we need the waiver so the project can go forward. I think everybody who sits up here probably realizes the old recycling center has been a blight in this community for forty-five years. We don't get this waiver, this project dies here. I don't know what you want from Bragg Avenue, but it's becoming an urban area more and more. And this is gonna screw up the pedestrian traffic if we have to put these in. It's gonna impact a lot of the residents in the area if we have to put these in. If we're going to a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, you don't need a decel lane. There's nobody who needs to slow down from fifteen and accelerate right back up to twenty-five. You're approaching a stop sign going this way. So we really feel like this is it for us. I mean, if we can't get these waivers, you know, then the recycling center's gonna have to stay. And that's all I wanted to say quickly, I'm sorry, I gotta pick my youngest daughter up at the dance studio, so. Wanted to get that in, I'll let the engineers talk to the specifics. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's late. Good evening, my name is Stone Ray, my address is nine fifteen Glenwood Avenue Southeast, Atlanta, Georgia. I wanna echo a lot of what Lee mentioned. The, if you could advance to the next slide, or do I connect control? Perfect. The, I wanna remind the commission about the future land use plan, which is mixed-use too, and specifically calls out an urban character for the entire stretch of this corridor. From what we're able to provide on the, on the private side, you know, we have, worked very hard to make sure our buildings face the street in an urban way, have a stoop, you know, the residential units are raised off the ground slightly, they're not slab-on-grade. On the interior of this site, the private street that we have, have drawn, you know, it will appear like a public street and those buildings will front it. We have a piece of ground that we've left for future phase-two commercial to have mixed use as the zoning district or the future land use calls out for. So we've done, I think, as much as possible, given the program and the other constraints of this parking requirements, building heights, things like that, to achieve an urban character. But we also believe that the streetscape should, you know, participate in that as well, as much as it can. And the, Lee mentioned the original streetscape plan for Bragg being an eight-foot sidewalk with a kind of swale buffer and trees in it. And during our DRT process, the staff has updated that to be a ten-foot sidewalk without the swale, the trees now in grades, very similar to what you see here in the urban core. That, that is signaling to us that staff believes that this is, you know, expecting more pedestrian traffic than they were prior in the future. You know, there's a lot of property along Bragg that is undeveloped. And, and this is kind of a challenging case, because you can stand on portions of the street and it almost appears rural, you know, with those large undeveloped properties. But I think staff is signaling, you know, with those increased requirements on the streetscape front, that this is gonna be a serious, you know, pedestrian thoroughfare, albeit lesser density than the core, it's still a very important street, you know, in that regard. And we believe that the addition of the decel lanes is, you know, is, is oppo- opposing that in some way. And, um, let's see, this, this commission has, has heard many appeals before on this exact same topic of, of sites throughout the city. And most of those are in more peripheral suburban conditions that are a lot less complex than this one. So this is a diagram of the site. There's the site here and Bragg Avenue, it is home to one of the Tiger Transit lines. That is the bus stop right there, just across the street from, you know, where our entrance would be, it's right there. And that bus stop has fifteen-minute headways, so there's four buses an hour there. You know, there's eighty-six units across the street at three nineteen Bragg right here. This project, like Lee mentioned, does not have decel lanes a part of it. So what I'm trying to get to is, there's a lot of urban complexity already happening here as opposed to other sites, you know, that may not even have sidewalks adjacent to them or, or even curbs, you know, to be able to easily install these decel lanes. Those parts of the city where, you know, traveling by automobile, you know, is one hundred percent of the time, whereas here, it would be more mixed. You know, the walk score currently, you know, is pretty high, it's sixty-nine and sixty-five for the bike score. We want to raise those numbers, and I know the city does too, uh, over time. And I think that the decel lanes, you know, are working against that goal in some, in some respects. This is, um, this is a quick diagram that I did just to show the difference in the additional width that these lanes would, would change these street sections. So here's one with, you know, two-lane street and a drive and crossings, and then here's one, and you can see the additional width that would take. At some, at some cases, the pedestrian crossing, you know, has to jog like this around it. So the, the, the very nice streetscape that we're eager to install, those ten-foot sidewalks, you know, has to jog around these turn lanes, not only on this site, but presumably if others along Bragg are developed as well. And this is, you know, if the bus stop, the bus stop is here and we want people to cross from here to here, we just think this is a, a real safety concern for pedestrians. This creating additional conflict, you know, between drivers and pedestrians when we wanna decrease as much as possible, you know, that distance from curb to curb. And, you know, driver behavior is something we can't control. And a lot of times when drivers enter a decel lane like this, you know, you can forget to yield at these crosswalks because the lane signals to you, you know, this is for me and, and it's to turn right. And I can do so at a higher speed than I would if I had to stop and take a sharper turn radius. So I wanted to show the commission these two diagrams just to have a visual, you know, of kind of what we wanna avoid and why we believe that the kind of, the, the, the black and white, you know, this is a collector, this, the speed limit's thirty, therefore it needs a turn lane versus the city's other goals of having a, an urban walkable space as Bragg redevelops and how those two things we believe are opposed, opposed to each other. I also pulled two projects. These happen to be in Georgia, but it's, they're similar type projects. This is a project of sixty-nine townhomes, you know, kind of similar scale to what we're building. We're not building this many, we have thirty of them. But this is on a street in Atlanta that is two lanes and oddly has the exact same traffic count as Bragg Avenue. It's a pretty lucky find, about a little over eight thousand a day. And it does not have the decel lanes, you know, to enter and out of here. And you can see exactly the type of streetscape that we wanna build and will a part of this project, you know. And you can imagine at this point, you know, if there were a right turn lane here, like, how that would have to push those units, units back as it would on our site as well. Here's another one.
Can you go back a second?
Yes.
Because if you look just a little bit further up from where you were pointing.
So.
That's a left turn lane?
Right here, yeah. Behind, that is a, that's a, that's a city street.
Okay, that's a city street, okay.
So on Bragg, we have, you know, we have turn lanes at the signalized intersections, right? So tha- that one that you're seeing in that image is a turn onto another street that connects off. The one I'm pointing out is the entrance into, into the project, yes, sir. And here's a second one, this one again is a much larger than what we're building, it's over a hundred units, but it also has a commercial component and it has a ten-foot sidewalk along it. This one happens to have street parking. This one happens to have street parking, and the speed limit is actually higher here, it's 35 miles per hour, but you can see the ma, the, the single entrance there without the two. So I wanted to pull two precedents, you know, from, from two growing cities of a similar product and a similar street section with similar traffic counts and speed limits, et cetera, to show that it is possible, you know, and our goal here is to, excuse me, is, you know, make the case that the city's overarching goals of Bragg Avenue and the future land use plan and pedestrian safety, we think are, are more important than the, the black and white collector all turn, all turn lanes all the time kind of situation. So that's what I have to say, I'm happy to answer any more questions, and, and Lee will as well if you have them, so thank you.
Thank you. And welcome back.
Does anybody plan to widen Bragg? Is, is that what I'm seeing here?
We had a plan probably 15 years ago to widen it, and I think one of the things that, that halted that was that, I think someone moved into that at the corner of Sanders and Bragg, the house that's kind of up on the hill, I think it used to be a commercial building, and they turned it into a residence, and that kind of impacted our plans, but I think it's still on the...
Is it still on the books, or is it gonna be, and you're talking like a...
Loosely, it's not on, it's not in any of our six-year plans, but it's something we talk about as traffic increases.
So that's like a suicide lane kind of thing?
It will be.
Is that the idea?
Two-way turn lane, yes.
Oh, is that what they call it?
Yes. Two-way turn lane. Two-way turn, left turn lane, yes. Okay, y'all have any more questions for staff or applicant? Comments or motions, please? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, let's do one at a time, because it's not on our agenda as two, but...
Right, it is two.
Decel lane, first choice.
It's the right turn lane.
Yeah, right, decel.
Right, yeah, okay. Get my bearings.
I move to approve the waiver with respect to the right deceleration lane.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, left turn lane.
I move to approve the waiver with respect to the left turn lane.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Oppose.
Roll call, please.
Nonna Reese?
Yes.
Dana Camp?
No.
Bill Chancellor? David Wisdom?
Yes.
Joseph A. Struck?
Yes.
Jennifer Stevens? Oscar Mosley?
No.
Or to three?
That is our last agenda item for the evening. Do you have any communications? Are they gonna be quick?
Yeah, no, I can wait. That's it, man, thank y'all member hanging in there tonight.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
What time is it?
8:07.